Five o'clock. I'll call this meeting to order on September 11, 2023. And if you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. And before we get to public service announcements, I do have another announcement to make. Our Chair, Mark Carrata, submitted his resignation from the Select Board yesterday. So we will have more information about what happens going forward in the coming weeks, on the coming days and weeks. So that's why this setup looks a little bit different than it usually does. Thank you. So if we'll go to public service announcements. Virginia?
Sure. First up, we have an announcement regarding the Planning Board MBTA zoning hearings. The Planning Board has been working over the last several months in preparation for an annual Spring 24 Town Meeting warrant article. They've been working with the Northern Middlesex Council of Governments and have identified four potential zoning districts for the community's consideration. They are having public presentations and community input over two sessions. The first will be Tuesday, September 19, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. here in the town offices in Room 204. And that's for the areas for UMass West and the Independence Drive area. The second is on Thursday, September 21, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. That one will be at the Senior Center, and that is for the Riverneck and UPS areas. Property owners who are considered abutters within 300 feet have been or should be notified by direct mail. And there are several links in the announcement if you would like to learn more about the MBTA zoning requirements and the Planning Board's process. If you need more information, you can contact Evan Bolansky, Director of Community Development, Next up, from the Health Department, on September 16, 2023, from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. on the Town Common, the Health Department invites you to visit Sober Fest 2023 for overdose training. You can learn how to administer Narcan in five minutes and also get a free Narcan rescue take-home kit. You can just show up. There's no registration required. And the Health Department will also be hosting a candlelight vigil for substance use disorder awareness at the Chelmsford Center Town Common on Saturday, September 16. This will happen rain or shine. At 6:30 p.m., there will be a signing of names of lost loved ones, and the event will begin at 7:00 p.m. If you have questions, you can contact the Health Department at 978-250-5241. And on September 26, at 2:00 p.m., the Health Department will be hosting a buried and treasures workshop for anyone who needs help decluttering, reducing, reduced acquiring, and getting organized. The workshop information session will be held at the Chelmsford Public Library again on the 26th at 2:00 p.m. If you have questions, you can contact Amy or Taryn at 978-250-5241, or email tangel@chelmsfordma.gov. And last up, the Health Department is sponsoring the Second Annual Fall Festival, Saturday, September 30, from 12:00 to 4:00 p.m. on the Chelmsford Center Town Common. It will occur rain or shine, and the rain location is at the Chelmsford Center for the Arts. They will be joined by the Market on the Common and the Center for the Arts Open House. In addition, there'll be lots of activities, including food trucks, music, kids' activity, health education, and more. They thank their sponsors, begin with Skin Med Spa, Choice Fitness, Dave's Hot Chicken, Great Hill Dental Partners, Jean Dart Credit Union, Lowell Five, Mill and Three Apartment Homes, Rourke and Mansour Law, and Sugarbug Dental Suite. So if you would like a fun afternoon, come out on September 30.
Okay, thank you. Next up is public input. Is there anyone that would like to address the board about anything that's on your mind this evening? And we have nobody in Zoom, I'm assuming?
No.
Okay. Okay, thank you. We will go right into committee vacancies then.
Okay, the committee vacancies as of today are the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee has one three-year term open. The Board of Assessors has one three-year term open. The Commission on Disabilities has one unexpired three-year term ending in June of 2024 and two three-year terms ending in 2026. The Community Action Program Committee has one unexpired three-year term ending in June of 2024. The Council on Aging Board has one three-year term and one unexpired three-year term ending in June 2025. The Cultural Council has two three-year terms. The Holiday Decorating Committee has one unexpired one-year term ending December 31, 2023. All applicants are welcome for the Parade Committee. The Roberts Field Advisory Committee has two unexpired three-year terms. The Tree Committee has one unexpired three-year term ending in 2024 and one three-year term ending in 2026. If you're interested in serving on a town board or committee, you can complete an online application available on the website, or contact the Town Manager's Office at 978-250-5202, and email tmoffice@chelmsfordma.gov.
Okay, thank you. All right, next up is licenses. We have an application for a change of manager and change of offices for an all alcohol beverages club license for the American Legion. And you guys, I think you've been here three meetings in a row now.
[laughing]
I love this place.
That must be it.
Dan Vigent, American Legion Post Commander.
Al Riccio, General Manager, American Legion, Post 313.
Phil Hamilton, Senior Commander.
Okay, so if one of you wants to tell us why you're here, you can flip a coin.
Well, my name is Al Riccio, and I'm the new General Manager and past General Manager, which passed away with Eddie O'Neill with the licenses in his name. So I was Eddie's friend, sat beside him for 17 years, learning the job, doing the job with him. So now I'm trying to take over his job. And that's why I'm here applying.
Okay.
I don't know if you have any questions for me. I mean, I've been in with the Legion for 22 years, had a bartender for 20 years, and like I said, I've been next to the General Manager that had the job for 17. So just trying to replace his shoes, if that's possible.
Right, he's going to be a tough act to follow.
Thank you.
Yeah, it will be, so. Okay, anybody have any questions for Al?
I will make a motion to approve the change of manager and change of officers on the all alcoholic beverages club license for the American Legion Alberton W Vinyl Post Number 313 at 90 Groton Road, as presented.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made in second. All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous, so congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. We'll see you soon.
Yep.
Okay, next is reports and presentations. The first one up is Doreen Deschler to tell us about MBTA zoning.
Mr. Cohen, distinguished Select Board members. My name is Doreen Deschler. I live at 17 Sienna 9 Circle in Chelmsford. I stand before you tonight with a petition in my hand, signed by 97 Chelmsford residents. The petition says, "We, the residents of Chelmsford, demand that the question of Chelmsford becoming an MBTA community be put on our next election ballot as a question for all citizens of Chelmsford to decide if we should comply with the state mandate, as it will affect us all. If you should wish for me to get more signatures, I can get together a team and get more. It should be no problem, as I collected these signatures with just eight hours of my own The residents I talked to and the ones who signed this petition and I agree that this is too big of an issue to be cited only by the town meeting representatives, as it will affect every single resident in this town. It is my wish that every resident in town be made aware of what an MBTA community would mean to the town of Chelmsford. They should know about all the multifamily complexes that it will bring to town, where these multifamily complexes will be built, how many units there will be, how the state will forever be more, forever have more control of the town zoning laws, how MBTA communities go by as-of-right, which the definition of zoning, which the definition is as-of-right means development that may proceed under a zoning ordinance or bylaw without, big word, without, the need for special permit, variance, zoning amendment, waiver, or other discretionary zoning approval. In other words, the builder has free rein to do whatever he wants, and the town has no recall or input or anything else. I mean, I know they're going to tell you that we do, but as it is written, if you look at it legally, it means we have no input. Okay? The residents of Chelmsford do not want to give our zoning rights to any other commodity, state, private, or other. We wish to maintain the ability to have the input as to the development of our town. Then there's the other issue of complying. Section 3A of the Zoning Act provides an MBTA community shall have a zoning ordinance or bylaw that provides at least one reasonable size in which multifamily housing is permitted as-of-right, provided, however, that such multifamily housing shall be without age restrictions and shall be suitable for families with children. For the purpose of this section, a district of reasonable size shall have a minimum gross density of 15 units per acre, subject to future limitations imposed by Section 40 of Chapter 131 and Title V of the State Environmental Code established pursuant to Section 13 of Chapter 21A, and be located not more than 0.5 miles from a commuter rail station, subway station, ferry terminal, or bus station, if applicable. Bus station means a location with a passenger platform and other fixed infrastructure serving as a point of embarkation for the MBTA Silver Line. Upon request of an MBTA community, DHCD, in consultation with the MBTA, may determine that other locations qualify as a bus station if such location has a sheltered platform or other fixed infrastructure serving as a point of embarkation for a high-capacity MBTA bus line, and the area around such fixed infrastructure is highly suitable for multifamily housing. Problem, first, Chelmsford does not own land within 0.5 miles of either the Lowell MBTA train station or the Barica MBTA train station, so they cannot comply with the first scenario. Then, Chelmsford does not have a bus station that meets the criteria, as we do not have a fixed infrastructure serving as a point of embarkment, and we do not have an MBTA Silver Line bus. Next, Chelmsford does not have any qualifying bus stations, locations with fixed infrastructure serving as embark stations for any high-capacity MBTA bus lines. We have LRTA buses. We do not have MBTA buses. We are not an MBTA community. I want my, I want for my fellow citizens of Chelmsford to maintain control of our town zoning ordinances, as I am sure most of my neighbors and fellow citizens of Chelmsford want. Personally, I do not trust the Commonwealth of Massachusetts with our town zoning ordinances. Look at the mess of the state. Do you really want to put Chelmsford into the hands of the legislators who have made such a mess of our state? Look at the MBTA. It's a mess. Do we really want to be under their control? This is not an issue to be decided by me or any one person, nor just a small percentage of residents of the town. It needs to be decided by every registered voter in the town of which this mandate will affect. So as in closing, we wish to have the residents of Chelmsford, one, informed of the issue, and, two, the ones who decide if the town should comply with the state mandate. If we, as a town, decide not to comply, it's time to tell the Commonwealth of Massachusetts that the intolerant acts were defeated 249 years ago in 1774, and they will be defeated again in 2024. What they are trying to do is unconstitutional. Chelmsford has a right to govern itself without interference from the Commonwealth. At last, I ask, what can I do to help in this process to proceed to get this question put on the ballot? Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Doreen at this time? So anybody have any thoughts about this? I mean, this is not something we need to decide today. Obviously, our next town, regular town election is not till next April.
Right.
We would need to decide, you know, probably, we'd have to talk to the town clerk probably January, February.
I'd like to ask the attorney.
Okay.
What our obligations are.
So, Madam Chair, I don't think that the town really has any leeway with regards to the statute. There has been a town in Holden that has not yet complied with the requirements of the statute, and they're actually now subject to litigation to try to force them, to bring them into compliance. There are penalties associated with the statute directly for failure to comply, and I've heard discussions about more severe penalties being brought at a later date for the holdouts. So as far as I'm concerned, we really don't have any options here. The town is required to comply.
Right, I understand that it is, you know, part of legislation. Could we put a non-binding question on if we chose to do that?
Well, you absolutely could put a non-binding question on. I would just question the wisdom of that.
I understand.
Given the fact that it may create the impression that the town has the ability to not comply when in fact it doesn't.
May I? The town does have the ability to not comply. Holden did it, and Holden's fighting it, and there's going to be other towns that are going to fight it as well. This is, this is quartering. That's exactly what this is right now. Commonwealth of Massachusetts is trying to pull a quartering. Intolerable acts, that's what I just said. The intolerable act was defeated in 1774, and it can be defeated again. This is wrong. This is unconstitutional. The town of Chelmsford has a right to govern itself. It does not have to comply with what the state is telling it to do. The amount of money that the town of Chelmsford will lose in their supposed funding is nothing compared to how much it's going to cost the taxpayers, taxpayers in new schools. What are we going to do about the sewage? Our sewage is at capacity. What do we do? How are we going to build these multifamily complexes? We have no sewage. We have to build more schools. We have to find out what we're going to do with sewage now. We got to try to tap in someplace else, maybe pay, who knows how much money we're going to have to pay for sewage somewhere. And then you've got to buy, you're going to have to have more police, because you're definitely going to need more security, because there's going to be more crime in the city with these multifamily complexes, all these, you bring more people in, you put people, you put a bunch of people together, it's like putting a bunch of rats in a cage. They're going to fight. So you're going to have more, you're going to have more, you know, you're going to have more crime, so you're going to need more police, you're going to need more fire, you're going to need more schools. Our schools are at capacity. So therefore, that means we're going to have to build more schools. So the amount of money that it's going to cost taxpayers is way above what we're going to lose in supposed funding.
Okay, well, unless somebody else has any questions, I think, as I said, this is something we can discuss going forward. We do have those presentations next week about the various locations. I'm sure this isn't the last we've heard of this.
Right, exactly. I just wanted you to know that this is not in stone that we have to do this. I mean, we are a sovereign town. We have our own bylaws, our own, you know, we're our own town. We don't have to do it just because the state says, oh, we're going to take funding away. No, it's.
So I, I mean, I agree with George. If there's anything else to look at from a legal standpoint, I would like to do that.
Right.
Other towns, what are they doing? But.
I will let you know what Holden is doing, because I plan to go and talk to them. So I will.
Okay, I'm not done yet.
So even if this were to go on the ballot, just as a non-binding advisory, you see how many people show up, what they vote for, the other question that I'm left with is to implement the compliance with the requirement is really under the purview of the Planning Board. So, you know, if we are going to do something even on the ballot, one thought I have is the Planning Board ought to weigh into that.
Yeah.
You know, like, I don't think we should go put something on the ballot and then tell the Planning Board, oh, by the way, we're doing that. So, you know, just like Pat said, we have time with this, but I think that I would also like to get Planning Board input on it at some point.
I agree with that.
And I think, I think, too, if that's going to happen, I agree with Pat. Let's see what happens with the public sessions this month. And then from there, I think, you know, the Planning Board is probably also going to be looking at what other kind of public education do we need about this? And I think that would be critically important to have if this were going to go forward on the ballot, so.
Okay, thank you.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so next up is Adele Stavas. Okay.
Good evening, everyone. I represent the Roberts Field Advisory Committee. And two months ago, we lost a stalwart for the town and for our committee in Sandy Rainey, who, if you see a plant at Roberts Field, her hands touched it. That's just how it is. And she was going to design and plant for us our gardens within Friendship Park. One was, is a butterfly garden. It is a smaller, rounder garden towards the back, and then we have what's supposed to be a sensory garden. We're still debating whether it's a good idea to have plants that can be eaten, near plants that can't be eaten. But the whole idea was a garden that will some way stimulate all five senses for kids to explore. So we would like to have some sort of association of these gardens with Sandy, with an official sign that says that the garden is planted in memory, as opposed to.
If you could stay at the microphone, so everybody at home.
Sorry.
If you want to point, use this screen, because there's a mic over it.
This one right here. Okay, thank you. What we want to do is somehow associate her with our gardens and to, for everyone who comes can, to remember her. Her sister would also like to hold a memorial service at the park that would involve the garden, and she would like to hold that sometime this fall. So what we are looking for is permission to associate Sandy's name with the gardens. We thought that since heart-shaped rocks and the Rocks Are Love Painted Rocks program that she started and led for years, that we would have something chiseled that was a heart-shaped rock, and we're not sure of its support yet. And then we could begin planting those gardens. The gardens have become more complicated in that COVID pricing interfered with our being able to get irrigation in the park. So now we have to completely revamp our plant choices by making them local and drought-resistant, because there's no irrigation to those particular beds. So while we're hoping to get everything planted this fall, there may be a delay till next spring in our finding enough of the right kind of plants to work in that space. But at the moment, I'm here for permission for the association of the gardens with Sandy Rainey.
I mean, one thing, I mean, I'll start the discussion, and everybody else can kind of add their two cents or whatever. It seems that we get more and more of these requests. We had one just several months ago, and later in our, on our agenda, we're going to be talking about goals for the, for this board. I was going to suggest that as one of our goals, we currently have a process for a proclamation, which I think it'd be totally appropriate to do a proclamation, but I think we need to add something in that about recognitions, because we're getting requests for different levels of recognitions, and I think we just need to have some kind of consistent criteria for that, and, you know, what levels there are, and how they're implemented and things like that. I don't know how everybody else feels about that. So that's, you know, I don't know that, that I would be ready to say right now, yeah, we can put up a statue or whatever you want to call it for Sandy. I mean, she did do a lot, you know, in that area and for the town. But anybody else have any thoughts on that?
No, I don't.
I would agree, but I think that everything that comes in front of us is going to be kind of different and unique, too.
Yeah, but I think we need to have different levels. You know, is something just a proclamation? Is something else a plaque? Is something else?
A dedication.
A dedication or something like that. I mean, right now, it's, it seems to be whoever comes in front of us, they, you know, it's, and I think.
Well, you don't want to end up with 50,000 stone hearts in Friendship Park. Yeah.
Right, or anywhere across town.
Defeat the purpose also, right?
Exactly, yeah. So, I mean, you know, I.
I'm sorry. The only, the plantings are going to be in the spring, you said, now?
We're going to, we're going to be seeking what we fondly call field-tested plants, otherwise known as donations from people's gardens. So it depends on what comes in, when, who we get to curate, what should go in, and whether it goes in the butterfly garden or the sensory garden. So there's still a little bit of logistics. We're hoping to get it planted by the end of October, because fall's a good time to get perennials in, just on a nature planting level, because the roots then stabilize over the winter.
And I see that there's two, you've got two yellow arrows on here.
Correct.
Were you planning to put, were you intending to put a memorial plaque or stone or whatever to Sandy in one or the other, or in both?
In one.
In one? In which one? The one in the back? Or you don't know yet?
We have not decided yet. It depends on visibility. It depends on the desires of the family. It depends on what we can figure out in terms of how to design the sensory garden in a way that people will be able, that it will be intuitive design for what plants are for sound, what is for smell, and what we get donated for those possibilities. So we know we do have a bit of our planting budget remaining from the original allocation for revamping, so we have a little bit of leeway there. And we also plan, there are many people who simply want to donate in Sandy's memory for this project, and we don't see that financing is going to be a huge burden in any way.
I mean, anything we can do to beautify the park, I mean, more than it is, that's obviously a benefit.
And it was also part of the goal of the nature theme and education program that was, that's part of the purpose and mission statement of Friendship Park, in that it is not only a place for recreation, but it's a place for children and families to learn about nature.
So, I mean, I agree with Pat that we should look at having a policy for this. My question is, does the policy start at this request or after it? And if we're going to put a policy in place, and if this is going to be on hold for that, then I think that we need to prioritize that policy sooner rather than later, so they can have an answer.
Right, I would agree with that, yeah.
And that would be appreciated.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, as far as plantings, I mean, I don't think we're going to stop you from doing that.
Right, the plantings can start.
If it comes to the point where you're ready to put in some kind of permanent structure, then that's the point at which I think, you know, maybe we would ask you to come back, or we would go out there and do a site visit, I guess, to see where it would. it would be, what the size would be, and, and what other criteria we might set up for that. And, and to Virginia's comment, I think if we do this, it should be something that we expedite.
Right. Within the next month or so, let's figure it out and hash it out.
And would it be a permanent structure or just like an ornament that would sit in, in the garden, on top of the garden?
An ornament that sits in the garden.
Permanent ornament.
Well, not permanent, if it's just sitting on the, right, then it doesn't.
Yeah, I, I get it.
Well, we're not sure whether, you know, we'll have some sort of plinth-type thing that wedges a little heart, or whether it will be on a stand like the gazing balls that are in, um, one of the other, uh, in the butterfly garden at the moment. So, uh, it's, the plan is fluid. Um, our, our biggest constraint is that the family would like to do something in terms of a memorial this fall.
I mean, I, I think you could definitely go forward with that. We, like I said, I, as far as a proclamation, I think that's easy to do. But as far, any, anything beyond that, I mean, we may or may not have, be ready at that time to approve something. Um, and then, you know, what it would be, but, um, so I guess that's what I would say right now, unless anybody has any, any other thoughts on, on it.
I'm okay with that.
Okay?
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Recycling Committee, you guys are up.
Hello. My name is Leigh Williams. I'm here to give you an update from the Chelmsford Recycling Committee. I am the Chair of the Committee. We also have here Rebecca Gore, the Vice Chair, and Karen Willis, who is our Publicity Coordinator. Next slide, yeah. So I'd like to tell you a little bit about the Recycling Committee, what we've been up to this past year, and, uh, what we're going to be doing this coming year, as well as give you a little overview of the Fall 2023 recycling events coming up. Next. Here's our mission statement. Couple of years ago, we revised this. We considered expanding it to all things sustainable, and we decided, after some thought, no, let's focus on simply reducing the volume of solid waste generated in this town. Uh, that way we can focus and try to do our best job on that one thing. We do it by trying to promote waste reduction, reuse, recycling, repairing, and composting. We meet once a month. We have seven members on our committee, plus the, um, Chelmsford Sustainability Manager, Chris Haley. Uh, we have two recent appointments, so we now have a full slate, and we are thrilled about that. So, uh, every week we, or, I'm sorry, every month, we track the, uh, total tonnage for both trash and recycling, as well as textiles through Simple Recycling and mattresses through UTAC. So this chart shows us the yearly totals. Brown is curbside trash in tons. The blue is all the items that are diverted from the waste stream, curbside recycling, textiles, and mattresses. So as you can see, uh, we had some really encouraging results in this past year, seeing the brown, the trash has come down quite a bit. So we're really happy about that. The recycling has been pretty level. Uh, we would love to see that go up a little bit as a percentage of the total trash. Right now, our diversion rate is about 25%, and we think we can do a lot better than that.
Maybe the cur, the weekly collection might help?
We hope so. Yeah, it'd be really interesting to see what we get next year, if that helps the recycling go up. So last year, one of our biggest efforts was the Zero Waste Day. This is our first time doing this, was a chance for residents to divert things they have at home that are usable in good condition, but they don't need, give them to someone who could reuse them. So we held this event at the parking lot of McCarthy Middle School in November. And people would, uh, drive their car through the parking lot and stop at various stations. We had a station for bicycles, books, uh, the food pantry had a station, uh, textiles, small furniture and household goods, uh, and then our normal paper shredding and bulbs and batteries.
So Leigh, I just have a question.
Mm-hmm.
How did you count how much of that, um, did you add that into your diverted amount or not?
No, I'm sorry. That, I don't know how we could have tracked that.
Right, I understand. So I think there's a lot more that's diverted that you maybe you don't pick up.
Maybe so, maybe so.
I mean, I usually, you know, take mine to Goodwill or something like that.
Right, right.
I'm sure you don't count that.
Right, right.
But anyway, I'll let you continue.
Um, we, we did count the number of cars. We had 375 vehicles come through, so we were thrilled. And many people said, we love this, please do it again. So we're going to try to do it annually. Next one is November, um, four, also at McCarthy. Uh, we also routinely help at the town recycling drop-off events. Uh, that's in, um, assisting the Sustainability Manager at the household hazardous waste, paper shredding, and up until now, leaf and brush collections. We'd help by checking for residency, uh, directing traffic, answering questions. Uh, we did not handle the hazardous waste material, thank goodness. Um, the other thing we do on a regular basis is staff the fluorescent bulb shed behind Town Hall, uh, eight times a year, from April to November, the first Wednesday of every month, that is staffed all day long, heat or rain or whatever, um, by volunteers. So we had 417 people visit last year, and we think that's a good thing. Another big part of our job is providing education and outreach to the residents. Uh, we do that through publicizing the town recycling events, where we show up at, uh, and we do that through the just local media outlets, thanks to Karen here. Uh, we go to tabling events at the Winter Farmer's Market, the Fourth of July Fair, uh, Earth Day Fair, the library. We've also done some presentations this past year with the library, uh, Chelmsford Telemedia, and even the Chelmsford Garden Club. Uh, finally, we have a website, chelmsfordrecycles.org, and that gives us another way to promote, um, recycling events, uh, general information. It's a way for residents to ask us questions, and, uh, that is one more outlet for us. Okay. Uh, we routinely support the townwide cleanup, which is usually, uh, the week of Earth Day in April. This year, we provided an online registration form so we could track, um, who participated, and more importantly, we could get in touch with them after the fact and ask them, how did it go? What did you find? What areas need more work? So, we had 77 individuals or groups that registered, uh, with 330 bags of these yellow bags of trash collected. I'm sure there was many more people that worked on it on their own that just didn't register. Uh, the most common items that were found were plastic water bottles or other, any, uh, plastic bottles, especially the little mini ones for alcohol and cigarette butts. So, we reported all our results to Keep Massachusetts Beautiful, which at a statewide level is trying to track, um, what we can do about it. Another initiative we had this past year was the Bags to Bens Challenge. We invited residents to bring in their, um, plastic, uh, recyclable plastic bags and film. We collected it for six months, or, I'm sorry, the challenge was to collect 500 pounds within six months. And if we did that, we would earn a Trex bench made out of recycled plastic. So, we did that. It was a lot of work on the part of our volunteers to sort through it all and weigh it and take it in to, to be recycled. Uh, we met our goal within four months, and we said, okay, we've had enough. I think, from now on, we're going to encourage people to take them to, directly to the grocery stores. And that was the big goal, really, is to educate residents that, yes, these plastic bags can be recycled, not in the bin, that causes major problems, but you can take them back to the grocery store or other retail stores. And they have a little box over by the front door or by the bottle and can redemption machines. So, yeah. All right. We also have an ongoing partnership with the students of the Chelmsford High School Eco Club. Last year, they started a pilot program for composting their lunch scraps at the cafeteria. And we, we helped by showing up for a month or two at the beginning of the year, and we'd go in at lunch and kind of help students learn how to sort their scraps. You know, this goes in the cycle bin, this, or the compost bin, this is trash. Uh, in turn, the, the students from the Eco Club help us out by, um, attending our events and volunteering. Uh, and you can see some of them here at, at a drop-off event and also at the Zero Waste Day. And this coming year, we have some new things coming up. Uh, the Repair Cafe is a brand-new event. This will be in just two weeks, Saturday, September 23rd, uh, to be hosted at the Chelmsford Senior Center. And it's coordinated by our Recycling Committee and the Chelmsford Public Library. We're partnering up on this. It's an opportunity for residents to bring in items that are, from their house, that are broken, need some repair. We will have volunteer coaches, expert in certain areas, to help them look at the item, uh, what's wrong with it, can we repair it, and hopefully actually do the repair right then and there. So, these are all things that we want to keep from going into the trash. If we can repair and keep using them, that's a good thing. We're going to have several, I'm going to give you a little pitch because it's coming up. Uh, we have several stations, uh, sewing, uh, jewelry, small electronics, digital devices, bicycles, and knife sharpening. That is, uh, coming up again at the Chelmsford Senior Center, and we're very excited about that. We also, this year, are advocating for the Massachusetts Better Bottle Bill. Uh, another plan we have is to tour the recycling and waste facilities for Chelmsford. There's the incinerator in Haverhill, uh, Complete Recycling Solutions in Southern Massachusetts, and the, um, Black Earth Composting Facility in Groton. We figure if we learn more about how these work, what are the problems and issues, then we can better educate residents, um, to help those, all those processes go smoother. And finally, one big, uh, thing we want to do this year is promote more composting of organics. And we are super excited about this new program for our curbside collection of organics that the town has, uh, just started, and you'll be hearing more in detail about that in just a few minutes from the Director of DPW. And finally, I wanted to highlight, again, our Fall 2023 recycling events coming up. We have the Repair Cafe, September 23rd. Uh, bring your items, and we'll see what we can do with them. Uh, Leaf and Brush Pickup is now curbsides. We have three dates this fall. There are new guidelines for them, uh, for the brush, that is. So watch for the postcard and the mail on that. The fluorescent bulb shed, we have two, uh, two more bulb shed days. And Household Hazardous Waste Collection is October 28th, and our Second Annual Zero Waste Day is November 4th at McCarthy. And to get the very latest, uh, information, we really encourage you to download the Chelmsford Recycle app. Uh, so this QR code you see on the screen, if you scan that with your phone, you can get, um, download that app, or just search for Chelmsford Recycle. And that's a really good thing that, that Chris Haley put together to inform residents. And here is, on this last page, is our website and our committee email address. We love feedback. If you have questions or input on how we can do things better, or what you'd like to see us do, um, one reason we wanted to come here to talk to the SLUC Board is to kind of get some feedback. How are we doing? You know, is there anything else you'd like us to be looking at? So thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, anyone have any questions for Leigh?
I have a question.
Sure.
So you, when you showed the bar graph, you were, you talked about you hope to see the diverted go up even more. Do, do you have, like, do, do we know that there are things that could be diverted in the trash that aren't being diverted, or could some of that be that more, the education is taking effect and more people are using reusable water bottles or reusable shopping bags? Right, I mean-
Right, right. I think it could be that the waste is coming down because people are buying less stuff and throwing it out, getting more reusables. We hope, we hope that's it. Um, there's definitely room for improvement, and-
Okay.
-organics is a huge part of the tonnage. It weighs a lot. It doesn't burn well at the incinerator. You know, if we can divert that out of the waste stream and into, um, composting of organics, that would be a lot of low-hanging fruit there.
Thank you.
There's also a very, very active buy-nothing community online in Chelmsford. They do a lot. It's insane. It's really crazy. Yeah.
And, uh, and I give your committee a lot of credit. Every time I see you at a, at a farmer's market, or like that, uh, the open house we had in, in June over at the library, you always, you always have, you know, fun things to look at and fun things to give away. I mean-
Yeah, you had the best booth.
You did.
Full-on booth, like, professional, yeah, it was great.
There, there are a lot of questions about recycling, and it's, it's understandable. The change, the rules are changing all the time, and there's, uh, people want to do the right thing. Everybody that we talked to said, we want to recycle, we want to do it right. And, uh, so it's-
Well, as Paul said, we're trying to make it easier by having weekly recycling, so hopefully that will show a big improvement, too.
Definitely hope so.
Yeah.
Thanks for your support.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and next up is Christine Clancy. After that, uh, that little hint of what you're going to be talking about, you can tell us all the details now.
Sure. Uh, thank you, Leigh, for that great introduction. So, um, so as part of, um, the state's goal established in 2020, uh, we want to reduce waste or divert waste going to a landfill by 30, 30% by 2030. Um, those numbers initially were being recorded during, um, during COVID. And so if you look at 2020, that year, our, um, we've, from, since 2020, we've diverted about 15% of our tonnage from going to the landfill to other waste streams, or recycling, or other, um, we have the mattress, uh, recycling program, so other textile, um, and the other programs that Leigh mentioned. So, the 15% is a great number, but by 2030, uh, we want to hit, uh, 30%. Um, and so hopefully, weekly recycling is part of that, um, is, is another tactic. Co, and, and, uh, what Leigh had mentioned is composting. And so we have offered at DPW, um, bins that people can purchase and put compost in their yards, really doing their own composting. Also, some people with larger yards set up their own composting piles. Um, but we have seen in, so there's a, we wanted to offer a curbside composting. Um, Black Earth Compost was the vendor that, um, we went through, through, we did a whole RFP process, soliciting quotes. Black Earth really is the largest vendor in the area, where they provide a curbside composting program. Um, it's offered in many communities, uh, Watertown, Manchester by the Sea, Newton, Brookline, Belmont, Beverly, Wakefield, Ipswich, Newburyport, Salem, Natick, and now Chelmsford starting this October 4th. Um, so they have 34,000 customers across the state, and what this offers is instead of doing composting in your yard, you could have it curbside, collected, um, on a weekly basis or bi-weekly basis. Um, the program is set up so that it is paid directly to the vendor, but what we did through soliciting the RFP is, is ask for, uh, like, preferred pricing, try to get a, a, a good price, um, so that we could have, if we have, and if we have more people sign up in the community, um, if it's over 300 Chelmsford households that register, then they'll see a reduction in that monthly pricing. So, uh, through the preferred pricing rates that we receive from Black Earth, if you sign up for weekly pickup, it's $19.16 a month. And then if you sign up for bi-weekly pickup, it's $14.99 a month. Um, and also, as part of that, we would, DPW would be paying for the compost starter kit, which includes a four or thirteen, typically it's a 13-gallon bucket. For some smaller units, you can also, um, have a four-gallon bucket. And also, it will come with that initial set of compostable liners. Um, also, so a benefit, I mean, this is really in an effort to try to divert some of the, um, the organic materials that are being thrown in the trash. Um, as a benefit also, Black Earth, so Black Earth takes that composting, and they have their own sites that do their own composting. Um, then they actually sell that product. So you see it at some of the local, um, I've seen it in some of our local, um, places. Uh, I think I've seen it at Mahoney's and other Western nurseries. You, you see that it's sold. Um, with this program, if you sign up, you do get a voucher to receive a four, a 40-pound bag of composting back. So there is a benefit to, um, a sustainable benefit of, of diverting compost or diverting organic material going to the landfill to, um, to being composted, but also having the ability to get a voucher to buy or to pick up a 40-pound bag of, um, compost for your own use. or to pick up a forty pound bag of compost for your own use. So if people are interested, this information, I do provide a link to the website. It's directly, sign up directly through Black Earth Compost. They'll put you, they'll register you. They have their own portal. We also have this information now through the app, the Chelmsford Recycle App on the DPW website. It's been posted on social media. And the, I think the portal that, that Black Earth offers is very informative. It goes to all frequently asked questions as to when the service calendar would be. If, also if you have a missed pickup, you can submit that directly online to them. And they also have a lot of information about what can be composted. And they have provided that in this brief update. But there's a lot, a long list of items and how, what you can compost. And it's, it's foods, anywhere from baked goods, bread, butter, grains, meat, sauces. It's really every, you know, every, all organic material and also non-recyclable paper and other miscellaneous items. Cotton balls, feathers, hair, wooden popsicles. So it's a whole bunch of items that you do typically throw away in the trash that could be diverted to a more sustainable composting.
Cotton balls? Compost cotton balls?
Cotton balls are compostable, yeah.
Christine, will they be, you know, encapsulated or whatever?
Yeah, so these, these are, there's a picture. And so they're completely air sealed, airtight. So you should never be able to smell them when you're, when they're closed. And also they're made with a certain material product that it's scent free. It wouldn't attract animals. So it wouldn't be a nuisance.
Predatory.
Yeah, and they can't get into it.
The type of weather we've had through with the heat and things, if they're out there for a little bit of time.
Correct. So yeah, this is, this is a certain bin that is made so that it will withstand any weather or animals.
And is the price is the same no matter what size you get either?
Yes, because it's really the service that you're paying for. So tip, their typical is thirteen gallon. They say they can provide four gallon. So the price, we pay for the, the cost of the bin, which is about, I think, thirty-five with the liners, maybe up to forty dollars. And then the, the monthly price would just be, it's really you're paying for the service.
Thank you.
So how, how would they, would this be like one day a week? They would come and do the pickups?
So likely they'd be in town one day a week. So we don't know what that date is quite yet. So right now people can sign up and it is a six month service. So you could, I mean, right now, if you wanted to sign up a little bit later, we, we have secured this pricing for two years. So people, I mean, we hope people are eager to sign up. But people could also sign up at a later date. And so the first service would be October 4th. That, the week of October 4th would be that first pickup available. That date would be set by Black Earth as to when the pickup is. So it's not guaranteed is the same day as your trash or solid waste, because that's a whole different service. It would just, but it would be a, a one day a week.
And if people wanted to do the home composting, do you still have bins available for that?
So we, we, we just, we had a bunch this summer that we purchased. So I guess we would, if people are interested, we'd be purchasing another round of them. We don't have any in stock right now. But we would be purchasing more at some point in time this year. My guess is it would be probably in the spring.
Okay. So do you have any other ideas about how to get the information out? I mean, it's, you know, it's hard to get this, you know, to get people to realize that's available.
Sure. So we have, I think, over 3,000 users signed on the app. So that's definitely a way that we're reaching out to a good portion of the town is through our Chelmsford Recycle App. And then we've done it, like I said, on, on our social, on DPW Facebook and our, our DPW Solid Waste Recycling website. So those are the, really the largest components. I mean, in mentioning it here, also we were talking about looking, coordinating with Chelmsford Telemedia. We didn't look for a mailing per se, because I think the Chelmsford Recycle App, a lot of people are signing up. And that is, we're hopeful that that's a good way to promote any of our solid waste recycling events or new, or new services.
The next, the next quarter tax bills are coming too, if you wanted to look at mailing something. With those.
I don't know if I can speak or not.
Oh, sure.
Hi, my name is Karen Willis. And we do in fact have a flyer coming out that it's in the next tax bill. And it, and it states the beginning, the October 4th composting kickoff. So you'll see that in a few weeks. And John Souza got that today. So that will be in our tax bill. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll look forward to the tax bill.
I mean, I guess if there's one of the things I'd, I'd suggest Christine is maybe set up a little, something at the library, maybe where they just come in and have, you know?
So that is a good point. A lot of our events, we do coordinate with the library because a lot of people do go there. So we could also coordinate with them on this, be, be on just a flyer. Maybe have some like the four gallon bucket or we can look at, or thirteen gallon.
They'll be at the Fall Fair in just a couple of weeks.
In the Fall Fair, right. So also Black Earth, as part of their proposal, they have a whole public relations component too. And so they want to be very active in promoting it. So also, so they, they have done this and like I said, across many communities in the, in the state. And they have been successful. I mean, they, they went through each of the towns and hundreds of users had signed up in each of the towns. So they also want to be part of that public, of that, of that reaching out to the community. So we, we just right now are confirming the preferred pricing or setting up for October 4th. But we are working with them as well to see if they have any. So any events, maybe with the high school, there's, there's a whole number of ways to communicate this.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other questions for Christine? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and now we have John Potts from Western and Sampson, who's gonna talk to us about inflow and infiltration.
I know you're all upset. Good evening. As you said, I'm John Potts with Western and Sampson. I'm just here to provide an update on the 2022 II investigations that we conducted and provide an updated, an updated, a new updated II plan for the town. So as we all remember, the, an ACOP, which was an administrative consent order, was issued to Chelmsford as a result of the forced main break at Southwell Field. As one of the requirements of that plan was to submit a, what they called at the time, an updated II plan, because in 2018, 2019, we had submitted an II plan to DEP for the review in accordance with 314 CMR 12, that every town in Massachusetts had to have an II plan. They wanted revisions to that. So in the ACOP, they wanted an updated plan, which is the picture there is this cover letter, the one that we submitted. So I'll, I want to just, I'm gonna refer to them as the November Plan and then the new plan when we talk. So the November Plan was a ten year plan that was gonna occur between 2022 and 2031. It would involve doing closed circuit television inspection of, and flow isolation, which is looking at the flows in the sewers overnight between 12 AM and six P, uh, 6 AM in the morning. So typically a lot of time, you're not gonna see a lot of sanitary flow. So it identifies some infiltration at that time. We're gonna look at 90,000 feet a year and approximately 500 sewer manholes. So this past spring, our spring of 2022, we conducted the first project in the annual plan. And that included looking at what we had done with meter areas three, sixteen, seventeen, and nineteen. These areas had been identified, they, back in 2018, we installed 35 flow meters and looked at flows for 10 weeks between March and, actually it was a little longer, it was between March and July. We measured flows and identified all the various metered areas in town of the 35. And we had identified these four as the top ones to look at. Now, even in the report, we didn't find, there wasn't significant amounts of infiltration. We, we were looking for inflow at the Wells Wells. So this passed in March, to, from March to June of 2022, we conducted the CCTV inspections and flow isolation of about 90,000 feet. And we looked at about 510 manholes. And we submitted the summary report to the DEP in April of 2023. The next two flies just show, this is meter area three, which is up near Southwell Field and near the Tingsborough Line. And these are near the center of town, near the Katrina Pump Station and 495 interchange, where area 19 is Littleton Road. And the area 16 and 17 are all tributary to the Katrina Pump Station or around the 495 area. The results were very good. We, there's a standard, a North American Standard, which is, it's the NASCO, which is National Association of Sewer Service Companies. They release a standard that's used in the United States. They look at pipe and manhole defects and for identification and assessment. They have a, what's called a PACP, PACP rating, which is the Pipeline Assessment Certification Program. And the contractors that we use are all typically certified in this program. And they, when they conduct the inspections and provide the logs and the information to us, they're given a code of one to five. One being no issues with the sewer. Two is there's some moderate issues, but it's nothing that you need to worry about right away. Three is fair conditions. Four is poor conditions and severe defects will become what called grade fives, and grade fives are immediate. Ninety-five percent of the pipe that we looked at was either, was greater than a one and the remaining five percent was a two or a three. So there were no fours and fives in any of the 90,000 feet of pipe that we looked at. The pipes were all in decent condition. As far as infiltration in the pipes, we identified approximately 430 gallons per day of infiltration. And in DEP standards, they'll only give you an allowance of 50% for removal. So that's only about 200 gallons per day of infiltration, which is really nothing in the pipelines. So that's, that's actually a good feeling to know that the pipes were constructed well in these areas and they're not really leaking at this time. On the other hand, the manholes that we looked at, we found approximately 36,500 gallons per day of infiltration, of which that can be 18,000 of gallons per day of removable II, which that's common because in a, in a pipe system that is very similar to yours, the manholes are gonna be around where the first thing is gonna leak because they're concrete, they're put in one piece at a time. There's more seams in them. There's holes in them that, from the lift holes that the contractors occasionally forget to plug. And you'll see little fountains coming into the manholes that we've seen over the years. So we, we expected to find it in the manholes, which is what we did. We also found approximately 20 manholes that had holes in the cover, which that's a direct source of inflow. Anytime it rains, then you have rainwater going right into the sewer pipe. And so the, the associated gallons per day for that was about 2,000 gallons per day of removable inflow. And you get a hundred percent credit for removing inflow because it's a direct connection and you're taking it out. The 50% is that the thought process is it's gonna find somewhere else further down the line on a defect that you, maybe you didn't find. So that's why DEP will only give you 50% removal credit on infiltration. As part of our report, we did a cost effective analysis. And we've found approximately three projects that you could do. The first one would be to rebuild, rehabilitate 200 manholes and remove approximately 20,000 gallons per day of removable II. As part of, like I said, we did cost effective. So if you remove the cost effective of manholes, there was approximately 140 that were cost effective. And you could remove about 17,000. And then you could rehabilitate 13 manholes that were, had the highest observed infiltration, which is about 400 gallons per day. And that's a standard we've used with other communities. That we said the manholes over 400 gallons per day should be immediately fixed because that's, those are the high producers, basically. And, and also to replace the 20 manholes with the inflow. That was part of all the projects too. The, all three of the projects would include those 20 manholes replacing the covers that had holes in them. So on a cost basis, if you repair everything with the 200 manholes, it was approximately 700,000 to remove 20,000 gallons of II. And it would cost about approximately 35 gallons, $35 per gallon, per day removal. The cost effective one was about approximately 450,000 and would be removing almost 17,000 gallons. And it would be about $27 per gallon per day. And the, we, we had recommended at the time to just do what we called the low hanging fruit, which is get the 13 manholes out of the way quickly, get the 20 right away. And that was gonna cost about $100,000. And you'd remove, remove about 6,000 gallons and that was $17. Subsequent to that, we talked about with the town, about looking forward to just doing all 200 of them and going to repair all 200 manholes at the time. So as part of that report, like I said, we recommended to do the 13 manholes. We also recommended that we focus the II investigations on the manholes and not the pipeline anymore. And that the town would continue using their investigative tool, the SL RAT, which looks for debris in sewers and looks for backups. And it's a very effective tool to finding where overflows could occur by identifying those issues. And we, we told the DEP that we want, we were gonna request a meeting. We told them back in the first plan that we weren't crazy about spending what we spent on this plan, which was, was over $300,000. But basically found out that 95% of your pipes were in really good condition. So we told them that we were gonna revisit that right after we, we agreed to do the first plan. But we want, we wanted to talk about changing that plan as soon as we completed the first one. So we requested the meeting with DEP to look forward. And we submitted the report, like I said, in April. And we had a meeting with the town and DEP on June 27th. During that meeting, we discussed what I, exactly what I've given to you. We went through the whole report again, said what we've looked at, said what we wanted to look forward to, that we didn't want to look at pipes anymore, that we wanted to look at sewer manholes. And that the town was gonna continue with using their equipment and that we would look at, create a manhole, a sewer manhole annual plan. So, and the town's also in the process of implementing the pilot, private inflow program as part of that as well. So that was gonna be part of one of the projects in the new updated plan. And at that time, we agreed to submit a revised plan by like July 13th to them, July 14th, which we did. Now, one of the things the DEP also requested was that we conduct smoke testing, which is a, I think we've talked about it before. It's putting smoke into the pipe. It, it looks for inflow sources. And they asked if we did it, if we would do it in just the two areas that were the highest from the 2018 report, which was there at Subarus, 16 and 17. And so we took that into consideration and we submitted a revised plan to them in July. Thanks. So the next slide. This is the new plan. The first project would be the sewer manhole rehabilitation project, which we would start with the, the design and bidding of it. And which would be followed with the construction. And fiscal year 24, we would do the design bid. And in summer 24, no, summer 25, no, wait, summer 24. I get confused with the fiscal year calendar. We would do the follow-up with the construction. And then the ongoing, the pilot program would also be being done in fiscal year 24. In fiscal year 25, we would do the smoke testing. Smoke testing is typically done in the summer and fall when groundwater is low. So we would do that in the fall, probably of 2025 calendar year, smoke testing. And then for the next five years, we would do approximately nine, we'd look at approximately 900 manholes a year and provide a summary and analysis of what we found, similar to the one that we had just done, that found the 200 manholes for the repair for this project. The next slide, which is, I know is a little hard to read, but it just lays out the costs in the calendar year that we're gonna do them. And they're the same, in the same order as we can. So we can jump between this slide and the last slide if we wanna review it.
Excuse me, are, are those costs?
Over here, John.
I'm over here.
There's a voice behind me.
So fiscal year 2027, 104,000, is that in 2023 dollars or is that escalated to 20 this time of year?
We apply approximately a three and a half percent. No, I'm sorry, a five percent escalation factor every year as we move the plan out. So the next slide. This was a comparison of what the, what we submitted for the November plan and the July plan. So the November plan was a 10 projects over 11 years, looking at 90,000 feet of sewer and 500 manholes. And the annual cost for that plan was approximately 400,000 a year. The new plan is seven projects over eight years. You'd have one sewer manhole rehabilitation, design and construction project. You'd have the one smoke testing project. And then you'd have investigation of approximately 900 sewer manholes over five years. And the average annual cost to this plan is 180,000. Just as another way to look at it too, is if you take out the 800,000 that's listed for the first three projects, which was the design and the construction, it's really, it's only about 110,000 a year for II investigations. And that's it.
Lot of information there.
Is this, the smoke testing, it seems like twenty twenty-six is kind of far out, but like what is the relative urgency of that? It's not urgent to do that now?
No, what, what DP is looking for is, is you want to do something every year in accordance with them and smoke testing is not necessarily a priority right now. It would be helpful to find something.
Manhole covers.
But it doesn't, yeah. You, you're going to find potentially roof leaders, maybe, building connections that were, that are faulty and things, but it's, so it's nothing, smoke testing is not a priority. And it's also, it can get very obtrusive with homeowners because it, it takes a lot to go, we go through a whole process. We involve the police, we involve fire, we send out notices to all the homes, we blanket them with, we tape them to their doors to let them know that we're coming. So they, we set up a hotline in our office so that, you know, if anybody has any questions, if anybody has any health restrictions. Now the, the smoke is non-toxic, non-staining, but to the average homeowner, they're going to read that, but that's not going to matter. As soon as smoke starts filling in their house, they're going to call nine one one. So we keep the fire department involved. We have people on the street that if we see them come out, we go and speak to them and let them know. So if someone, it could irritate someone that has asthma or emphysema. So we ask the people to call us so that we know which houses there are and then we'll go knock on the door and let them know we're about to start the smoke testing. So maybe you want to go outside for fifteen minutes in case something happens. So it's a very, there's a lot of steps before we even consider getting, actually doing the smoke testing itself. And it doesn't take that long to do. It's those two subareas, top of my head, I think is about fifty thousand feet. And we can do usually about eight thousand to ten thousand feet a day. So it would only take about maybe two weeks to be conservative to get all the smoke testing done when that project is being done.
So is, is it mostly residential where that would be?
It's, it's within the, whatever's in this sixteen, seventeen, around four ninety-five corridor and where like, I don't know if you know where Katrina Road Pump Station is, but it's, it's a lot of the tributary areas around that that would be. So it's probably a combination of some commercial, but probably mostly residential.
Paul, you had sent us in twenty twenty-one, you had sent us the plans and reports and stuff. Could, when you have a minute, would you mind sending us like the full documents that are referenced in this, the April and the July documents?
And Paul, if you can't find them readily, I could get them to you pretty quick.
It's not urgent, I'd just like to have them.
Now, we also haven't heard back from DEP on this plan. I tried to send them an email, I didn't get any response from them. I was trying to see if they had looked at it yet. I know if you submit something in July.
So they still have to approve the plan?
They will likely approve it, but I believe DEP has a, that if they don't respond in comments, it's either ninety or a hundred and twenty days the plan is considered approved if they don't give you any comments.
Well, it sounds like things that we need to do anyway as far as going forward, so.
But we've met all the requirements of what they asked. Like I said, we hadn't, we weren't really encouraging the smoke testing project, but they were really adamant about wanting the smoke testing in there. So that's why we put it in and put it out a few years so that we don't feel it's something you have to do right away.
They're active, there's an active smoke testing program in effect in the city of Lowell that's sort of being delayed by the weather, but it's.
Yeah, you can't do it after rain.
Yeah, it's imminent, what's going on there. But it's, I, I think the other take out of the report is the infrastructure is very good in terms of the pipes, you know, once again. But why you're seeing this issue of the smoke testing, what's going on is when we look at our sewer flow in Chelmsford, and you'll hear this later this evening from Christine Clancy, from this, this August, meaning last month, versus August of last summer, which was a drought summer, we had a fifty-five percent change, increase in sewer flow in the same month for, for a year apart. I E drought month, historic rain month. So what that raises questions to us, but also the DEP saying, where's some of this flow coming from?
So was it higher in those two areas in sixteen and seventeen?
Well, it's high across the whole town.
Yeah, but.
Yes, oh yes, it's universally.
But are they targeting those two areas specifically because that's where it was higher for the smoke testing?
At the time, yeah, well, at the time when we completed the, like I said, we put in thirty-five flow meters and then did an I I analysis on all the meters looking for inflow and infiltration, those were the areas that.
Those are the biggest ones.
Basically, that's the highest sources of inflow.
So that, that basically circles you around why the smoke testing is that will show illicit connections, i.e. roof drains or sump pumps. And, and this is sort of, and that's why Christine's going to come in in a little bit and talk about that because clearly there's a correlation between rainfall and sewer flow.
And the, the other thing that's good about this plan is, is it can be changed at any time. If you decide you want to do the smoke testing sooner, then we just move that up and we can move the projects around. The DEP, as long as you're doing something, DEP is happy.
Any other questions for John?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Paul Heberty, we're going to talk again about public comment policy.
Hopefully for the last time.
You'll, you'll be here as much as those guys from the Legion, it seems.
So the latest version now breaks this up into three separate documents. So one is the draft policy that would be sent out to other boards. One is the select board's public comment policy and then one is the select board's public input policy. So the one for public comment policy to be sent out to other boards, there really hasn't been any changes or there will be blanks that need to be filled in by those boards individually. Yep. The draft select board public comment policy, we need to fill in the select board in all of those blanks. But other than that, that's really unchanged from.
Is that footnote a mistake?
That, yeah, I actually had, I was re-watching last time and at one point I thought it was saying that we were going to be dropping it into a footnote, so I did and then I deleted it, but somehow that.
So the select board policy is just the public comment policy with select board.
With select board, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And then the public input policy. You can see the changes that were made responding to the comments from the last meeting, sort of changed the order of this one paragraph, same paragraph, but sentence, "All comments from the public must be directed to or through the chair once the speaker is recognized. Once recognized by the chair, all persons addressing the select board shall state their name prior to speaking. Request to address the board. Written testimony and other inquiries may be transmitted by mail, email, fax or telephone to Chair, Chelmsford Select Board, 50 Bill Ricker Road, Chelmsford, Mass. 01824. Telephone, fax and email contact information can be found on the town's website." And then that's just, was deleted down below. And that's the extent of the changes.
Looks good to me.
All right, just one thing, I, I thought we were going to take the contact information and make that be the last paragraph. I mean, that's, that's relatively minor. I mean, there is a lot of duplication from, from one to the other. But, I mean, if everybody's comfortable with it, rather than send it back again.
Yeah, I don't think it hurts. You want a motion?
Just one other thing, the, the way it's designated, should that be how that? I don't know that we have any other one dash two point eight, parents one, is that?
Well, what he did was he put, the, the public comment policy would be one point two, one point eight.
Right.
And then this would be a subset under that.
Right. And I don't know how we had designated them. I, I meant to look at the, our policy to see if we have anything else like that. If that's the way the designation should be, is that typical? I mean, if it is, then that's fine.
I don't know if there's any other policies that have a subsection, but it's certainly an acceptable way to do it.
Okay, all right.
I'll make a motion that, that the board adopt the select board public comment policy and the public input segment of regular meetings policies as section one dash two point eight and one dash two point eight one, respectively, as presented.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Is all in favor?
Hi.
Okay, and then I'll send the revised policy out to all the other boards, right? Okay, great.
Okay. All right. Darlene, we're ready for your, your budget report and, and our favorite thing, free cash.
Free cash. Evening, members of the board. So I'm here tonight to report to you the fiscal twenty-three and of your financials. Fiscal twenty-three was financially successful, positive, we ended well. Of course, you all know that in June, the town had its bond rating upgraded to a triple A, which helped us, the town receive favorable interest rates of two point six seven five for our fiscal twenty-four borrowing going forward. So that definitely helped the town positively for financials. And then we also, in about two, three weeks ago, had our free cash certified. And again, that was positive, it was certified at two, about two point eight million dollars and I will talk to the numbers to that. So fiscal twenty-three was a good year. We've done well. For, we'll talk revenues first on the local receipts. One of our largest local receipts is our motor vehicle excise. Collections, actually, we had a five point three million dollar budget for our, our excise this year, for motor vehicle excise. We actually collected about three hundred and seventy thousand dollars more than that budget. So their motor vehicle, I guess, is still, is still being strong. People are still purchasing vehicles, I don't know if, or it's leasing. We're not really sure what we're seeing. But what I did see, where we may see a little bit of trend that might be trending down a little bit, is we only collected nine thousand dollars more than last, from the prior year. So we really didn't have any big, from looking from prior year to this year, we're seeing just a, there was really just a small increase. So maybe we are starting to, to level out on motor vehicle excises, we'll see when we get our commitments, our next commitments coming in. And we also see that with our, this year anyways, with our permitting fees. They've seemed to slow down the last, the trend for the last, almost five years, it was really, really strong. This year, I actually saw a little bit of, we actually didn't collect all of the one point five million that we had predicted or committed for, for budgeted. We actually saw a fifteen percent decrease from the prior year. So we're seeing just a little bit of slowdown in the permitting. Again, we didn't have a lot of big projects that were pulled. There may be some projects on, in the horizon, maybe will help that number for the, for the upcoming year, but at this point, for the fiscal twenty-three, we actually saw a little slowdown in our permitting. Meals and the, in, in the rooms tax, meals tax actually came over our budget. It was in a twelve percent increase from the prior year. And I think we're, you know, people coming out of the pandemic, feeling more comfortable being out restaurants, we're just kind of seeing that over the, even from last year, we saw a little bit of people back out and, and enjoying our restaurants, which is good, good news. And then the rooms tax came over budget too, and it's actually a ten percent increase from prior year. But again, we're, I think I've reported before that our, our local hotels are, are housing in the homeless and we're seeing that revenue that comes in from, from that housing. And I think I've heard that the Best Westerns, and they're going to be renovating some of their hotels to, to actually home, house homeless families also. So there's going to be, that's kind of the trend that they're doing with these hotels, is turning them into housing for the homeless. It's going to help with our revenue though there. We did see a little increase this year on fees and other department revenues from prior year and exceeded our budget. The two places we're in there is outside detail administration fee. We get an admin fee for, for the, from the contractors from like Verizon or National Grid when they work in the streets. I'm sure everybody's driven around town and has seen detail after detail after detail, they're out there working and we're just seeing a higher collection rate this year of, of details of, from contractors. So the roads are out there being, they're just doing work out there. And then we've seen, we've taken on our animal control officers doing, is kind of part-time on working with Ting's Barrow and those, those fees have increased from Ting's Barrow for his work that he's doing out there for, for animal control. So those are the two areas that's kind of made that, those revenues raise. Alcohol licensing was up a little bit this year. It's pretty much, it's, it's been about the same every year, it's three percent from the prior year. What happened there is in twenty twenty, we had a hundred thousand dollar budget and then in twenty-one, we reduced it down to seventy-five K. And that was due to pandemics. I mean, we knew that people were, you know, restaurants were closed during COVID and licensing's pretty much, they were shut down. So we've still have it at the seventy-five K, but we're seeing now the trend where people, restaurants are back open and everybody's, so we're bringing in, we're bringing in a little bit more licensing, coming in a little bit higher than what our budget is. So it's seventy-five thousand, seventy-five thousand dollars is our budget, but we brought in about eight, eighty-eight thousand dollars there. So we're bringing about thirteen thousand more than what was budgeted. Investment income, we've seen a significant increase in our, from, from prior year. Last year, we were actually reported a negative of forty-six thousand dollars for investment income and that was just due to the bad market that was going on at that time. We're required to, to report mark to market every month on how the market is. This year, we actually had a gain of five hundred and thirteen thousand dollars on our investment income there. And that is just due to, if everybody knows that we just have, there's a stronger bond market. So we're doing much better on our investments this year, thank goodness. And you'll see that across the board when we look at stabilization fund and OPAM, you'll see that we're doing well there on the interest income. Miscellaneous and non-recurring revenue exceeded. This is basically due to a few sources. The opioid abatement, we had a real, a sale of real estate and some vendor tailings that John Souzer, our treasurer, finance director, he will do some vendor tailings that we actually bring back in that we're not, we bring, bring the cash back in that we're not collecting. We close those out after a certain amount of time. The opioid settlement, we get that money, that money actually comes to the general, has to go to the general fund and then, then it can be allocated through either free cash or it just can be raised back to the health department. And that's kind of what we've done in the past, in the past few years on the warrant articles, you'll see that. I think we usually do it as a reason appropriate, but it's one of the same. Comes in as either free cash or you raise and appropriate it back and it's to use the health department, border health department uses that for opioid classes, trainings, things that they need to, to do for, for any of that. And our real estate and personal property tax collection is always our tax collection. Our office, John Souzer does a great job with tax collection. It's ninety-nine percent collection, can really, can't get much better than that, so This is just the list of all of our local receipts and you can kind of see the prior year is on all the way over to the left-hand side and then our actuals and then what were budgeted and it shows the percentages of where we are. So we had about a, about a seventeen percent increase from the, from over our budget and we had about a five point eight percent increase from total from prior, prior year. And the second part of it is just shows the real estate, the state reimbursements that we get and then other funding sources that we vote, we vote at town meetings. Basically, it's just kind of used for the things that come in from sewer, from sewer and things like that, stabilization, other things that we use for other funding sources to fund the general fund. And then miscellaneous recurring and miscellaneous non-recurring. You'll see that our Astrex, which is the, is the solar, we do periodically during the year, we'll do some sales, we'll sell back some of their solar and that will bring in additional revenue to us for that. So that helps on that line and that's why we're, we collected, we actually collected more than we did last year. Any questions on revenue? That's, we pretty came in pretty strong, so we're good there. No, no major issues. On the expenditure side, that we actually had about one point two million dollars worth of encumbrances. Most of that is the school department, the school is allowed to encumber for, to, for things that need to be purchased through the summer to get them up and running for the school, for the new school year. So they had one point one million dollars of that one point two that was actually encumbered. So they had $1.1 million of that 1.2 that was actually encumbered. The rest was kind of through DPW and the facilities departments for projects that they already had committed for and had purchases, but the invoices didn't come in on June 30th, so they encumber those funds. We did return back to the general fund about a million, a little over a million dollars, and that you'll see when it flows down, how it helps us with our free cash on that. But other than that, the departments do very, do a very good job. I don't have any issues with the, the department heads do a great job managing their budgets. And if you, it sounds like a lot, a million dollars being returned back to the general fund, but that's less than 1% of our budget. It's such a really small amount of money that, so it's, it seems like a lot, but it really isn't based on our $150 million budget. The second piece of this is actually just shows the assessment, state assessments that we bring in. And then we also have like warrant articles, like our finance committee reserve, our action committee, and those are just things that we, other things that we spend that just kind of flows down to the general fund budget. Free cash, free cash calculation, like I said, we've got certified at 1.887, 154. How the, there's a, there's kind of a formula to free cash. You actually state, you start with your undesignated fund balance from the prior year. You add any of your open receivables to that number, or reduce down, you have to reduce that number down by your receivables because you've got to keep that. Those are, what we're saying is those are receivables that we have in the books that we haven't collected yet, so we need to keep that aside. You then, they hit me then, again, with any deficits that may be on the books. We just had a small amount, under $20,000 worth of deficits that hit our general fund. And they don't, these deficits aren't just in your general fund, they're in all of your funds. So if you have a deficit in a revolving account, that goes against your free cash. So we did get certified at the $2,887, $150 million. I think I had kind of predicted that to you guys. I think I said it was going to be about 1.5 or 1.6, so it was good to see, I mean, 2.5 or 2.6, so it came in at the 2.8, so we're good. We're happy to see a positive number. It's good. The sources of those free cash is really basically what I talked about. We had the returns from the departments, including prior year encumbrances. Those are encumbrances that were set aside for the prior year, but then we didn't use them. So they, that, that fund also closes to the general fund. So there was $40,000 there that we didn't have used in the general fund. And then our general local receipts surplus was $1.5 million. That brings you down to how we get to that $2.8 million for free cash. Those are the sources. What I thought I'd do is go through all of our enterprise funds. I think it's good to see how the enterprise funds did. The first one is our sewer enterprise fund. Again, we, they, they've got cert, their free cash is certified at 898,647. There was, from the prior year, free cash to this year, there was an additional $54,780 added to the number. That was the difference between their revenue and expenditures. So that's, they closed, the sewer department closed in a positive number. They do have, they did have a reserve for expenditure that we did have to, we have a pump station project that's, they're reserving some funds that's currently going on. So we reserve those funds for expenditure. We don't want to close out those because then they've already been voted, and if we close those funds out to the, to the fund, then those funds are not available. So we always have to have a line. If there's a project out there that's already been voted at town meeting but not completely spent, we have to do a reserve for expenditure, and that's the line that you see there. That's the 261,000 that's sitting there, so we reserve for expenditure for our current project. But their, their free cash did get certified at 898,647. It was like, it was over a million dollars a couple of years ago, but I remember in fiscal '23, we had a $500,000 project to do the infiltration system to look at that. So that actually came, that $500,000 was voted out of their free cash amount to do the project. So that's why their free cash has been in the millions, but it's gotten reduced down. This is just their sewer enterprise, their revenue budgeted versus their actuals. We, their revenue was budgeted for $5.1 million, it came in at 5.3. So they had a surplus of $172,000 of revenue there that kind of helped out with their, with their free cash amount. And then their expenditures versus budget, they actually ran over their expenditures. It's hard to explain this, but they, when they have, they had a, they had actually had a reserve for expenditure on the balance sheet, so they could, over the, at that time, it was $319,000. What they do is they charge every, all of their expenses, including that project that they're reserving, and then when I close out the balance sheet, I close that project out to the reserve for expenditure, and then the balance goes to their undesignated fund balance. So it looks like they actually were in a deficit, but they really weren't because there was already $300,000 sitting on their balance sheet, reserve for expenditure. But you don't see it when you're looking at actuals to budget. It's just the way that we do accounting for enterprise funds. They're much different than the general funds are done. Stormwater, they actually, they were in a positive of $44,634. That got added to their free cash amount or their undesignated fund balance. So they were certified at $346,813 was, is their free cash. There is no expenditure, reserve for expenditures or anything there. They don't have any projects that are currently going, that are happening. So it's just pretty straightforward there. There, if we want to look at their revenues versus expenditures, they had an additional revenue of $12,000. And again, they, in their, in their expenditures, again, they overspent. They had a project from the prior year that was on there for $54,000 that was reserved for expenditure in fiscal '22. That is now, that was closed out, it was a covert that they were doing, and that was included in these expenditures. So that's why it looks like there's a little bit of an overrun, but they really didn't overrun because they had the money sitting there waiting to be spent in their expenditure. So they were actually, actually, they actually were under their, they actually were under their budget. So they were fine. Golf car, golf course enterprise fund. We, there was really no expenditures there. We had no projects there, so it was just complete revenue. We collected $74,028. That added to their undesignated fund balance to give them a certified free cash number of $331,430. It's been a couple of years since there's been projects over there, but the courses I hear was in good shape, and so I'm not sure if there's any, anything going to be happening, but at this point, that's, they'll have, there's $331,000 in that could be used to do projects. If you look at their budget versus actuals, again, their budget is $30,000 for revenue and expenditures. So that was, they, we collected $74,000. So it's over, that's $44,000 over the $30,000 we budgeted. So that's the amount that will go, that gets certified to their, gets added to their free cash from the prior year that gets certified. Positive there. Pay access, the cable TVs. They also did very well. They actually added $115,718 to their prior year undesignated fund balance to get them certified at $536,397. They do have a project that they're, people, Jolene and I have been working very closely in making sure that everything's got done there. They're doing a new studio over at the Parker School. So we've encumbered, he's $73,000. He's pretty much wrapping that up, just waiting for the invoices to come in to get those all paid up and get that project done. That was voted at town meeting, I think, a year and a half, about a year and a half ago. And those, that money came out of his free cash amount. So again, he did very well. He, again, his revenue comes from the Comcast, the Comcast and Verizon bills that we pay. Well, you get us, there's a small fee on those bills, and that's how his budget is funded. We had budgeted for $683,000. He actually did well this year in coming in at $734,000. So we had about a $50,000 surplus of revenue that was added. And then he did not spend all of his salary expenditures, really is where he fell under his budget. He was kind of down a person in his department. He's now actually hired, so that actually was really with the salaries. He didn't have salary expenditures, and that's why he came in about, he came in under $47,000 under his budget versus actuals. We have a lot of enterprise funds. Again, there, we didn't have, we didn't have a project for fiscal '23. We had one, I think everybody remembers back in fiscal '22, is when we did the refrigeration and all that. Had to be done to get the ice back up and running there. So this year was just all pure revenue. We took in $100,000 there, and their free cash got certified at $434,380. And there's really none again. They have a $60,000 budget, so there's just that, the difference between the $60,000 and what they brought in is what got added to their free cash. I thought I'd just kind of give you how we did with the stabilization fund. We, again, at a town meeting, we had transferred in from the general fund. That's kind of standing warrant article that we see at town meeting. But what I really wanted to bring attention to is our investment in earnings, like I spoke about earlier. Last year, we actually showed a deficit of $420,000. We were in this year, on that line item, and this year, we're in a positive of $193,628. So you can see that the market did much better this year. So that was nice to see, that the market's doing better and helps us with the interest income coming in. Same thing with our fiscal, fiscal year '23 OPEB fund. We started with a balance of $18,473. For fiscal '23, we added 2.9 million, a little over 2.9 million, bringing it to $21,439,002. If you see the investment income there, it's 1.1, almost 1.2 million dollars. Last year, we had a deficit of $746,330. So it was nice to see that investment income doing well. And again, that's, that's all of this money, the OPEB trust fund that is with prem with the state, and they invested very well. The last thing I want to just talk about a little bit, I thought we'd talk about community preservation. We don't always talk about this, but I think there's going to be some maybe warrant articles for community preservation, so we thought we'd just kind of give you what the balances are. This piece of it is actually the revenue that came in for fiscal '23. We had, the fiscal '23 commitment was $1.4 million. As you can see, there were some abatements that we get, we do during the year, just like we do with our, with real estate and personal property. But we actually took in the 1.3, leaving a really small balance left over for collections. Those will get, they do get collected, they go to, they get leaned to tax, just like all the others, everything else will with the real estate tax. But we, in total, including all the other fiscal prior years, we collected $1.9 million in CPC funds and just a small, under $20,000 worth of abatements for the fiscal year. For that revenue, we did bring in investment income of 14, and then we always have the state match. And this year, the state match was $503,537, to bring us down to that 1.9 million. This is the balance sheet of what the, so the way that this kind of works is the top, the top, if you go down to where it says fund balances, is really where you should look. The top three where it says carryover, those are the balances we need to keep for projects that are currently existing on, on the books. And then we have your reserve for expenditure, and then your undesignated fund balance, or your, kind of your free cash is the way I say it. So we've, right, right now, there is $3.2 million of kind of your free cash or available funding available in CPC. Now, I wouldn't, if we have a large project, I would not recommend us pulling it out of the free cash. I would recommend that we borrow for that because, and then use this money first to pay the borrowing. We, we did this about 10 years ago. We bought a piece of property and used like a million dollars, and then it drained on this fund. And then we didn't, though, if another big project comes up, you just, we don't have the borrowing capacity. So it looks like there's like a lot of money there, but we like to have it for borrowing capacities. When we go to borrow, the borrowing agency looks at what your fund balances are in these accounts. We also, we also already have outstanding debt with CPC on other projects. So we want to make sure that we always have enough money in here that we can carry it in case CPC, if it goes away, you need to be able, this fund needs to be able to pay all the debt that's in the fund. So they always want to keep money in your undesignated fund balance. The other three where you see designated, it says open space after the undesignated, there's, those are like the 10% budgets that we, we put, we put 10% in of the amounts. And why there's really not much money in there is because what the policy is for community preservation, what they've decided to do is we put the 10% in, then we take it right back out, and that's the vote you see at town meeting, for debt, to cover the debt on any of the projects. So we have some housing projects, we've got some open space projects that we're still paying off. So that's, the two numbers that are really important is really like the undesignated fund balance and then your reserve for expenditure. That also is a balance that can also be used. But the top two numbers, the open space, carryover balance and historical, those are projects that have currently been voted and need to be held aside for projects and cannot be spent. The last thing I, go ahead.
I just had a question. So Paul, does the warrant article language allow for borrowing?
Yes. Yeah, the motion will be for borrowing.
Okay, thank you.
And this is where I just, when I was talking about the debt, what we have outstanding debt with CPC, I thought this would be good for everybody to see where we're, we go out. The warrant poll land is the one that goes out to 31. The debt with CPC has gone down tremendously in the last few years, but you can just kind of see where we're at and what are, and when we look at the, with the warrant article, I think John can, he can probably, Mr. Souza can talk to this about what the cost of the borrowing will be for that project. I'm sure he'll talk to that. But this is what we have on the books right now, that the CPC has to pay for this outstanding debt and where we're at throughout through 31. And that's really how we ended fiscal '23. Does anyone have any questions on any? We did well, and I don't have any concerns.
Thank you.
The only thing I will note, and with John and Darlene in the room, to the board's information, is our neighboring comparable communities of Billerica and Tewksbury are going out to the bond market in a few weeks, and neither of them received a credit upgrade. Similar to Chelmsford, and I can tell you, they used us to try to get their increase, but it did not occur. And, you know, again, I haven't seen their reports, but I ran it, I was with my two colleagues today, and, and, yeah, I'm just pleased to report to you that, you know, it does show the work that Darlene and John has done, you know, with town meeting and everybody in the board and everyone to ensure the town's financial position.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up, Finance Director John Souza and DPW Director Christine Clancy going to talk to us about suggestions for the remaining ARPA funds.
Thank you, good evening. So we've been tracking the ARPA projects past year and there is a, a two point three million dollar balance that we're tracking, the unallocated funds. We have, so DPW did put together a recommended list of projects. There is an attached list to this memo, we can go over in a couple of minutes. The overall list does amount to three point three million dollars. So what I did is I tried to see how we could prioritize some of the projects. What we saw is really projects that are probably much needed to resolve more, more time sensitive concerns. So I'll go over the priorities that we put together. Looking back at the money we have spent to date in ARPA, a lot of those projects were focused on HVAC ventilation improvements in the schools. There was the fire truck. Looking at the remaining balance, what I see is what DPW's perspective is with the so much rainfall that we've received this past season, thirty-six inches of rain, unprecedented. We're receiving so many drainage inquiries and when we're looking into it, some of these fixers are not just simple fixes. They require more comprehensive repair, replacements or improvements. So as we go through this list, you'll see that there is a common, a lot of the recommendations are related around drainage. And we, I know that in terms of a timeline, when we go over some of these projects is DPW could potentially design some of these in-house when we go over, when I can go over the list of projects. We could design in-house, get the permitting done in-house and then potentially begin some of the construction work this coming spring or summer. We can maybe just go over, and then I guess this is a reminder that a lot of these funds don't have to be allocated until next December. That's the timeline and then projects have to be complete, completely completed by December twenty, two thousand twenty-six. So we still have time, it's just we're at a point right now where, you know, looking at how we could potentially spend that remaining, remaining funds. So now looking at the list and it is a little hard to read on the screen, but there's a list of, a total of eighteen projects. These aren't listed in any order of priority. The priority that is shown is really the highlighted, the highlighted projects and these are projects that myself and my team, when we looked at it, we saw that these would maybe resolve, resolve more imminent or concerning, sorry concerning, more time sensitive concerns brought forth to us. The items in gray do amount with a contingency amount to just about that two point three million dollars. I'll just briefly go over each item and each of these items and then if you have any questions. The first one is Graniteville Davis Road watershed assessment. We, in all the high intensity rain events that we have received, there's, there's been a significant amount of complaints in that area about water that is getting into people's sometimes houses, basements. We looked at the, right at the intersection of Graniteville Davis Road, or they, we have a drainage easement there. The question was, could, at Davis Road, could that culvert be upsized? Really have to do a whole watershed analysis to see if even upsize is feasibility and also looking at that drainage swale that we have to see if it could be even, if it could even be dredged, that would involve a whole NOI permitting process. So this hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, this is one project that we would outsource to a specialist consultant to do a whole watershed assessment to make, to see what recommendations could be implemented to that whole, to that whole area. And from there, there would be construction, whether that be in-house, it would depend on the, the outcome of that assessment. The next one is Roberts Fields Friendship Park Drainage Improvements Project. We have known about this for some time, but we just haven't had the ability to fund it. The Friendship Park, especially during high intensity rain events, floods, and there really is limited, I mean, if you look at the, where the playground sits, it actually sits in the lower part of that whole area. So a lot of that water, even though it is all, a lot of it's pervious, it does, especially in higher rain events, it all kind of pitches towards the playground, flooding the playground. We've had times, we've had to shut down the playground because of how much rain that we've received. So we do have a plan that we could put in place where we would just add some drainage, basically intercepting the water before it gets to the playground and then bringing that, actually probably could do some infiltration, so infiltration onsite somewhere between the playground and the parking lot and then having an overflow to a, to the system in the, in the street. This would be designed in-house and then we could probably do the work potential, this is probably large enough that we would outsource it, but potentially we could do, right now we've priced it as outsourcing it, outsourcing the construction, but doing the design in-house. The next one is, actually the next two are related to Anci Road, going back to a couple of storms. We had some severe flooding on Anci Road and in one case where I think there were some cars trapped and we had to have people rescued and we're talking more than twelve inches of water. And looking at this, it's a combination of repairs needed. One, number four is just at that intersection of Anci Road and Jesse, the, the infrastructure's configured in a way that we could better, we can improve the configuration to improve the drainage at that particular intersection. The, the catch basins are interconnected where they really should be brought offline and connected to a separate manhole. But also that whole system then goes down towards Pendleton where there's an outfall and we went and looked at that outfall and that, if you look at the outfall going up about four hundred, three hundred fifty feet up that stream, there's a, there's a lot of residue, probably washouts from years of sand. It's, it's not natural to the, to the stream. So it's essentially, it's not really dredging, it's cleaning out of the, it's called stream cleaning. So that would be a project that we could, these two projects, we could design in-house, permit and have that work take place next, next summer. It is, I mean, in terms of number three, it is two hundred forty thousand dollars, but it's just, it's three hundred fifty feet of removing material that was brought in probably over years and years from the, the, the street. And so it would be removing that material and disposing of it as well. Number five, I didn't prioritize this because we're already advancing it, is we, we had as part of the original ARPA projects, a inspections of fourteen culverts and we're just starting to receive that final, we're working on receiving a final report. There will be some recommendations coming out of that. We might look at that through capital. I mean, but there's also, it is shown here, it's potentially advancing some of those projects as, as an, as an option as well. Number six is the Mont, Montview Road Drainage Improvements. This is another area where we've received reports of significant rainfall or stormwater runoff, especially if you drive down North Road. I've actually witnessed it myself. It looks like water, a waterfall just coming off of someone's property and that isn't coming necessarily from their property, it's coming from Montview Ave and it's right at where it takes a corner. We actually stopped the paving limits in this last two hundred feet. This will, well, we will do the paving, but we're hopeful to get this drainage improvements done and it involves upsizing a pipe of about two hundred feet and reconfiguring the catch basin at that corner. And that would provide some significant improvements to that drainage area. These all, all really, I think, were recognized because of the season that we've had. Mill Road Catch Basin and Outfall Edition Downstream of Ready Way, this is a relatively small project, forty thousand dollars, but I think, so over by the Russell Mill Tennis Courts, that area had significant washouts. Some of that might be related to the, the private properties, but there's definitely a portion within the right of way where we could make some improvements with all the water that runs down the street and actually helping it get, there is an existing culvert, but we would just need to have a new outfall to that culvert and that would be this project. Number eight is Ledge Road Drainage Improvements and this would be installation of RCP drainage, or drainage pipe along Ledge Road. There, with all the truck traffic that has been received on Ledge Road, there's been a request for some drainage improvements. I didn't prioritize this only because it's such a large, large cost. It's about twelve hundred, and also the, it is, would be a very complicated construction project we have to look at. It's about twelve hundred feet of pipe that we have to put on, put on Ledge Road connecting to DeBrook. It would also potentially require shutdown of the road to install the drainage at some pieces along the way. Also, this area is called Ledge Road because there's probably a lot of ledge and so just the, there'd be a lot of likely blasting. So it's a very, very complicated project. I know we used to get complaints. There isn't unfortunately, an easy fix right here, other than this project. We can't do local leaching basins, we can't really infiltrate because ledge is so high in this area, but it is a potential project listed. Number nine and ten are really related to sewer, flow metering improvements and upgrade cell modems at thirty-eight pump stations. So in order, so as part of the conversations we have with DEP in regards to some of the infiltration, the, in flow removal or assessment effort, we do need to upgrade our pump stations to have new cell modems just for, to allow for more frequent daily live reporting of the flows. And so if we were, if we were able to improve the flow metering, flow metering improvements at the five stations, Southwell, Katrina Technology, Edgewood and Drum Hill, we would, having that data more real live, we could maybe monitor how storm, how our pump stations are reacting during storm events. So that's the thirty-five thousand dollar project. Beyond that, so we have forty-one pump stations in totality, we really need to upgrade our cell modems across all forty-one stations. So that would be number ten, is the updating cell modems at the, it says thirty-eight pump stations. Number eleven is procurement of a emergency reserve generator. This was something that was just wished for sewer and I think it, just in terms of, we have had some outages at Katrina, Southwell, Meadow Brook. We, we currently don't have a generator large enough to operate those three pump stations. We would have to current rent them and sometimes they are hard to get, so just procurement of one of them. Install oil-water separator at Fire Mechanics Garage at fifty-four Richardson Road. Right now, the, so the Fire Mechanics Garage does operate at fifty-four Richardson Road and there's a holding tank that is used that really is not compliant. We do have to upgrade it. And so this is something that would be designed by DPW and then could be put out to bid for installation. This, we have, I guess, done a, that seventy-five thousand dollars, we have done a sketch to see how everything would lay out and it does amount to about seventy-five, estimated to be about seventy-five thousand dollars for that work.
For how long have we been non-compliant? Did a standard change or we just have been non-compliant?
I'd have to check when holding tanks were, I mean, yeah, I mean, and the holding tank is dated from going back decades. Why, when we were, it was just, I, I don't know the exact year timeframe that it was demanded.
It's an antiquated.
It's antiquated, but I think really when looking at, now that we've looked at the site the past few years, it's something we just want to upgrade. Installation of electric vehicle charging stations at municipal buildings. This is, if we were to upgrade or add six electric vehicle charging stations, four being at town offices, two, actually, sorry, one at DPW, three at town offices, I believe, and then one at the library. One would be a fast charging station, thinking the fast charging station would be at the library. This cost right here is a hundred thousand dollars, but that is after rebate and incentive. So there would be some grants that would also pay for a good portion of it. This would be the, the out-of-pocket cost or, or, or the, the town's cost. Number fourteen is a facilities project, cleaning, repair and assessment of switchgear at McCarthy in the high school. So as electricity comes into the buildings, it goes into a switchgear system that then steps it down to, so it feeds the entire schools. The switch, as, as our, so our schools are all from the nineteen fifties, nineteen sixties or the high school being the newest, nineteen seventy-six. The switchgear systems are original to the building. Replacement of these systems in its entirety would be millions of dollars. We have looked at assessments. Repair of them, in order to repair them, you have to kind of go through and clean them and assess them. And so just for these two locations, estimated two hundred fifty thousand dollars. I did put this as a critical project just because that, you know, without having that system functioning, then you don't have electricity going to the schools. Number fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, these are all projects I didn't list as priorities, but we've talked about them. Upgrade and renovate bathrooms on the second floor here in town offices and also looking to see if we can make some improvements for low flow water fixtures. Then these were, these were shown in the previous, I think, original recommendations of list for ARPA was HVAC improvements at Old North Town Hall and HVAC assessment improvements to CCA. I will say that for the CCA, I know there were some improvements made over the past year that were, if you look, so I think last summer, there were some problems with the HVAC system. This summer, actually, there were some improvements made. It was more, we have a HVAC technician in-house that made some repairs and so the, the system at, in CCA has improved. And that's why I just didn't prioritize these as much, given that we, we have, we, we have current, we haven't had any recent issues arise, given, for the HVAC improvements at these two locations. And then the biggest one here is the PFAS remediation for two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five at Richardson Road. It is costing us about two hundred fifty, so two hundred fifty thousand dollars a year to maintain the system. It's required reporting, sampling, weekly, weekly monitoring and also sometimes swapping out some media on the existing system. This coming year, that price is a little different, it's four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So it's, seven hundred thousand dollars is reflective of the two years, four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars is this coming year and it's because there is, we're required, so three years after the onset of the notification or the DEP number, there's, it's called the phase two CSA classification and we're required to do some additional monitoring to see how PFAS is, how, how, how the cleanup is going and also how, to make sure that there's no further impacts or groundwater. That, that involves installation of two monitoring wells all the way down to Bedrock and doing a whole hydrogeologic evaluation. So that's the, it's about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to do that and is required through the, by DEP. That is, we, I just listed that as a priority, given that it's something that we're required by DEP to do. So in total, the projects, if you look at, we had everything on this list, it's two point seven, eight million dollars. I always like to carry a contingency, so five, five hundred thousand, that brings it to just under three point three. If you look at just the highlighted projects, which me and my team just kind of flagged as more, what we recommend is more of a priority, is one point nine million with a contingency is at two point three million dollars. I don't know, is there any questions?
Anybody have any questions or comments?
I do.
Yeah, I do too, but go ahead.
Okay. So for the stormwater related projects, I think we, we have on our coming goals for this year to like get a better sense of what the overall stormwater infrastructure plan is. So I'm, I guess I don't have the picture of how do these flow up into that bigger context? For example, we had a inquiry recently, I think, that you responded to Christine about Harmony Park and you had estimated to fix the flooding issues there. It was like a five hundred thousand dollar, but like that's not on here in highlighted or in white. So what else is there? Or do we know, like, is there, is there an overall context for some of these drainage and stormwater issues?
So these, so I guess we're finding a lot this summer that were not on our previous list. So some of these were, some of these were not known until this summer. We do have the master plan document that, that really speaks a lot to the culverts. We have three hundred and twenty-five culverts. So if you go through that document, I think that's a very clear document to, to look at assessment of culverts and repairs and that's been, we have followed that to some extent. When you start to look at the infrastructure, we're still going through to kind of see what the, stormwater is the newest division and so we're still working on getting some of the infrastructure put into our GIS to up, we do have it in our GIS, but also updating to how it is actually depicted or actually exists in the, the street. And then I think this summer has been so telling where problems have, and so Anci is an example where we had the flooding and when I actually went out there the evening that it flooded and I think it was Chief Ryan was out there and, or a police officer like, oh yes, this happened like fifteen years ago. So we've, you know, last summer was a drought and we have also had other years where not as much rainfall. I think this year was very telling where things are coming up. We do have a list of, of other locations and we're tracking a, a, an additional list. We thought about making this list bigger to show more of the items on here. I think we put, we looked at, oh, this is something, is an easy solution. Some, I think, well, the only one drainage assessment was the, or the, the whole watershed assessment was the Graniteville Davis Road. I'm sure there's other watershed assessments that we will want to do in the future. It's just that one. It's just that one, given that whole area, we, we thought it was warranted to look at that one. So I think the answer is that we're kind of built, like, now this new team, but we're, we have a plan, and we're, actually, this winter, we're going to go through and update it, but based on the new findings, I, it warrants an update.
And then on number eighteen, the PFAS remediation, Paul, isn't that Article thirteen?
Yeah, and what I would do is I would take no action at town meeting, and then fund it out of the ARPA funds instead. I mean, you know, we, we sort of went back, we sat down, John, Christina and I sat down all the town meeting articles, all the ARPA potential funding things. This was the ARPA list, and then the town meeting list, and, and, and we felt that the, you know, Richardson Road, basically it can't fail. I mean, we have to do that, and so that's why we put it here as a funding obligation.
Here's what I struggle with in that. I, the HVAC projects, the stormwater projects, you know, those are like one-time big expenditures that I think is a really good use of the ARPA funding. I struggle with the PFAS remediation for two consecutive years, because this is going to be a recurring cost for like, at least ten years probably. And so should, should we be planning for that in our budget, rather than using ARPA funds and applying the ARPA funds to some of these other projects that didn't make the cut? You know, and, and that, that was the question that I raised, because this isn't, you know, it's not twenty four, twenty five, and we're done. We're going to have to plan for that, and we're not going to have ARPA funding for So I, I'm, you know, I, I struggle with that one, and a part of me was saying, well, should we, should we look at, relook at this after town meeting and see where some of that comes out?
Well, but, but part of it is I've got to bring a plan to town meeting, and this one, I, this one, in other words, when we looked at the cash constraints and our free cash, and looking at the priorities, and I guess the, the simple answer is.
So you're expecting a vote tonight, then?
No, no.
You're pushing this through for a vote tonight?
Well, no, I'm expecting.
I was going to suggest no.
No, I'm not asking for a vote tonight. I don't need a vote until town, I don't need a vote until the board recommends on how it wants to do town meeting, which won't happen until probably three weeks from tonight, because you'll have a meeting in two weeks where all the town meeting articles will be presented for you. And then you'll come back, because of the October calendar, you'll come back this following Monday, the sixth of October, I believe, because the following Monday is Columbus Day, and then you get town meeting. So we're, yeah, we're at town meeting in five weeks. So two weeks from tonight, you get the presentations of the town meeting articles. The third week, you make your votes and you meet. The fourth week's Columbus Day, and the fifth week, we're at town meeting. So I'm not looking for a vote until your recommendations in October, three weeks from tonight. But it comes down to, as you said, a funding tradeoff. What I'm asking to do at town meeting, from the free cash, the two point eight million that townline recommended, I'm proposing to use half of that free cash for road and sidewalk improvements, one point five million. So if, if I had to take in this funding towards the PFAS remediation, you know, towards, you know, to town meeting on the free cash, then, then basically, I'm going to take that one point five million down to one million, because as, as she noted, that's a two-year appropriation. It's only four fifty this year for town meeting. So those, basically, you know, sort of putting it all out on a table, how do we fund it? I, I think the town meeting, I want to give town meeting the discretionary vote of, you know, do you want to vote one point five million dollars into your roadway? If they say no, that's okay. If I go to town meeting and say, do you want to vote four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for PFAS remediation? If they say no, then I guess the answer is then come back to the select board for ARPA money, and basically say, well, town meeting didn't think this was worthy, but I'm asking you to fund it instead. You know what I'm saying? So that's, that's sort of how we.
So we have, we have a, we have kind of a spike in the recurring cost this year because of the extra things that we have to do to get to the four twenty five.
Exactly.
Why, why put two years into this?
Because, well, I think, because as, as Christina explained, we, we've, we have such a backlog on road projects and the sidewalk issues with those accessible ramps and so forth. And, and you've seen those plans presented at this table in previous months. I mean, we're, we're looking at twenty and thirty year time horizons to do those projects. And so therefore, to me, any leverage that I can do responsibly to put money into roadway improvements, that's where I'm directing those funding towards. So again, it, it's, it's sort of a six of one, half dozen of another, but that's how I'm doing it.
I'm saying, why are you lumping twenty twenty five into this? Because that doesn't help with free cash this year, roadway improvements this year.
But my expectation.
We could put two hundred, we could put two hundred and fifty K into roadway improvements from ARPA.
Right, but, but, but again, I'm trying to look in a multi-year horizon. My goal would be, then be to put another one point five million in, in road and sidewalk improvements a year from now, but I don't know what our free cash is going to be a year from now.
I see what you're saying.
My, my concern is, is given the economic uncertainties, we may not have that kind of financial flexibility at that period of time. So that's, again, there's no right or wrong answer, I'm just sort of explaining how we came here.
For the clarification. So I just have one more question, if I may, Pat. So the three hundred and fifty thousand contingency is like, it's fifteen percent of the two point three million, or eighteen percent of the one point nine five million. How does that compare? I didn't go back and look, but from a percentage standpoint where we had the overruns, unexpected overruns on what we spent, is that in the same?
So.
How do, how do we feel comfortable that that's the right percentage?
Well, it's hard to, I guess, relate that, because that was the actual overruns. This is, those projects are all been designed, vetted out, and that was the actual overruns.
Right, but percentage from the initial budget, what, what percentage?
I'd have to go back and check, because the thing is, is that the original, because remember how we took a bunch of those and increased them by twenty five percent, thirty percent? And so I'd have to go back, because we came in, well, it, it's also, it was skewed. Some projects, I think it was the seniors, so we were carrying, it was seven hundred eighty thou, eight hundred thousand dollars is what we were carrying for most of the year on seven million dollars, so just, I guess, about ten percent we were about for overruns. And then when we had the senior center come in, that was significantly less, because it was a kind of a scope change. So then it brought it down to two fifty, so that was less than three percent. I put this together as close to fifteen to twenty percent, because, I mean, these are all highly conceptual, and we haven't scoped some of it. So the thing is, when you start to scope some of these projects out, you might, will revise these costs, and that would be more, they, they would be updated. So I don't know if you can relate this exactly to what we ended up with, because I don't know how those project, what, when those projects started, I don't know how they were scoped out.
Even from your experiences, is fifteen to twenty percent. It seems like, it seems like a healthy amount, but I don't know.
I mean, you could, I would recommend at least ten percent.
Right, that's my thought.
But, you know, I just was thinking, you know, I think it was, some come to fifteen, some eighteen, because that's just a, I mean, even sometimes you see thirty percent contingencies, just because you're, you're going, when you go through some of these costs, you could have something that completely skews it. I hope it comes in less, and you can squeeze in another project or two, we just don't know. And we still have more time to allocate, too, so that's why I was thinking, I mean, if you, we could track these proj, track some of these projects, and then you could then potentially reallocate more up to next December.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I, I think that's a good point to make. I mean, we obviously don't need to make a decision tonight, and I don't think we, we should. But, and maybe they could be done in phases, so we see what the, you know, what the trend is. I mean, one that, I guess I was a little surprised that it's not listed as a priority is the emergency reserve generator number eleven. I mean, it seems like that's something that you know you're going to need it at some point.
Yeah, but you, you could obtain those from the, from the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency, or from the Northeast Regional Homeland Security Situation, or from another community. For example, you may have read recently or seen the problem they had in Tewksbury with the water to that development, in Tewksbury, where the water main broke, and they had to, you know, donate water, and they, they had to bring in, basically, the town of Tewksbury borrowed the pumper from the town of Borica to serve that project. So that's why when you say, when you look at priorities, you're like, well, a generator would be good, but in the event that that rare situation happened, you know, are there other sources that we could have, as opposed to spending a hundred twenty five thousand dollars and then hoping someday you're going to, you know, pull the cord on it? Not hoping someday, but having it in case you have to, so.
Yeah, 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 right.
And in fact, one of the things we talked about, again, at the meeting I was at today with my colleagues from the NIMCOG region, with the director, is we should create a regional list of such equipment, and, and so that way, if a situation arises, then, you know, Lowell, Drake, Tewksbury, Borica, Chelmsford.
And then you just hope everybody doesn't need it at the same time.
Right, you hope you don't need it at the same time, but the point is, is therefore, you know, you, you then have that ability, and that was one of the lessons that, that was, you know, come out with the situation.
I, I think that, that's a really good point, and also through the way that we bill for sewer, we have a little more of a budget, if we had to put it in our budget. I guess one thing, too, is that our, our, a lot of these projects are stormwater, and that, I mean, outside of capital or grant funding, we can't put together a similar sewer plan spending eight hun, another million dollars a year without increasing sewer, sorry, stormwater fees, and we're just not there yet. Right now, we're, you know, with sixty two dollars a residential, and there's a tier structure for commercial. So that, we're seeing just so many stormwater projects needed, and it'd be great to find grant opportunities or other, or, or look, see capital, but I was just thinking, if we could, you know, that's why I targeted stormwaters, because I, I can't inflate that the enterprise fund a million dollars.
Right. Yeah, and I know with our, you know, with our new MVP plan, I mean, maybe there'll be more money coming from that, because like you said, I mean, this is just, you know, scratching the surface of the issues around town. It's a, it's a big town area-wise, and we have so many of those areas, you know, I know some that aren't here, and, you know, probably not as serious as, as a lot here, but I'm sure you could at least double this list.
I'm sure, yeah, there's definitely a lot more, too. These were ones that we saw that when we responded, you know, the cars that had to be rescued, and people's having feet of water in their backyard, or, and maybe resulting in a whole watershed area that needs to be evaluated. Or we clearly see infrastructure that, okay, this needs to be reconfigured. So they were, we see solutions where some of the, some things, I mean, or some solutions might be more involved, like watershed and a build out of entire system. These are looking at existing systems and trying to see how we can repair them or upgrade
John or Darlene, do you have anything to add?
Good evening, madam chair members of the board. I was just going to mention, Director Clancy touched on one of the subjects I was going to discuss as well. So when we met as a group, the town manager, Christine and myself, one of the takeaways for me is that the, the drainage improvements and that, the needs are great in that area. I think it's been magnified by, certainly by the weather that we've had this year. And she touched on the finance, so from a financial point of view, one of the reasons we thought that these were projects were all worthy, bringing, bringing before the board, is that when you think about it, we only have so many options. So with the stormwater enterprise fund, as Christine said, it has a much shorter history than the sewer enterprise fund, it's a smaller budget fund. So if you were to try to fund all these through a borrowing, this ARPA funding would avoid, like, trying to, if you look at it from a residence point of view, that would avoid spikes in the, the stormwater fee, because when you think about it, it was just a few years ago that we started up the fund, so we had, there were startup costs such as vehicles, some of the equipment that was needed, the Vector truck. So as we get more into the future, and we've paid off some of the debt service on those initials requirements for capital and vehicles, you may be able to take on some more projects, but we thought with these, the need is so great, and it would avoid delay in borrowing if we're able to fund them from ARPA. So that was one of our considerations. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I guess that'll do it for tonight. We'll, we'll be talking again about this, I'm sure.
Thank you so much.
Thanks very much. Okay, so Christine, I guess you can just stay right there and tell us about sewer flows.
All right. So we've already kind of touched on it tonight, but we do track our monthly flows, and I think we thought it would be good to come to you, just to give you an update. We track them monthly, but what we're seeing is a clear correlation between higher rainfall amounts and higher sewer flows. And so before you is the sewer flows for the month of August two thousand twenty three were ninety two point three eight million gallons, which is fifty five percent higher than the flows from last August significantly. So it went from fifty nine million gallons to ninety two million gallons.
So is the gray last year? What's the difference between gray and red?
Gray is, it, oh, so, sorry, gray, I apologize not having a, so the gray is the Chelmsford only, and the red is the Chelmsford and Tingsborough flows. And then the blue line tracks the inches of rainfall. And so you can, so last August, we really were in the middle of a drought, one inches of rain, very low flows. And then this month, we had just under, this past month in August, we had just under eleven inches of rainfall, and we've had high groundwater, because if you look back at the summer, we had thirty six inches of rainfall this summer, and only thirteen inches of rainfall last summer. So as far as, there's, there's a clear correlation. Also, looking at Tingsborough flows, they also were higher, thirty nine percent higher from last August, six point one two million gallons compared to the four point one two million gallons. And all, so now looking at, we look at trends, we look at, you know, going back to a twelve, twelve month trend. So we allocated two point six million gallons a day, and Tingsborough was allocated zero point three five million gallons a day. So over the past twelve months, that we were averaging two point seven six million gallons, which is about, which is over our allocated amount. When you add in the combined Tingsborough-Chelmsford flow, which is three, in totality is three point zero one million gallons, we're just under it at two point nine one. So based on the rainfall, we're essentially, we're at capacity. Because of that correlation, we're doing the sump pump inspection program. We haven't actually, we, people have not responded, so I do, we're now working with Chelmsford telemedia to have some more information put out there. We've done some Facebook posts, and we're just hoping people sign up for that program. We also talked about other methods we could impose, and, or will be required in the future through DEP, the smoke testing, other, other neighbor. This is also, this isn't just unique to Chelmsford, there's flows prob, there's increase in flows across the region. I know Lowell's doing a, a smoke testing program. We've talked with, Tingsborough's done some, I think, Tewksbury. So we're starting to see more of these inspections come up to see how we can remove some of the inflow that we're seeing in the system. I don't know, is there any questions? Oh, and then attached is also just the detail flow that we provide. We were providing this on a monthly basis, but this just shows you for each of the locations of the primary pump stations.
So now you did a direct mail to some of the people that you suspected might have had sump pump issues, right?
Yes, we did, and we only got a few calls back from the direct mailing. We actually got most calls from Facebook. We only have a handful of people signed up right now. Not many people, and we've had people call, ask me about it, and then say, oh, I don't want to sign up, so. So I, I mean, we hope people do participate in this program, because we want to work with the, with homeowners to try to find solutions, whereas we will be required by DEP at a later date to find those connections. And at that point, it's, you know, it will be on the homeowner's responsibility to provide that separation.
Okay. And when you explain that to people, they still don't want to participate, huh?
Yeah, so, I mean, we're going to keep, continue to outreach, I mean, we've been mentioning it, we have, we've been doing these random, like, Facebook posts, if you have a sump pump, please call, because we had the one-page flyer, which is nice and informative, but maybe people don't want to read, we just did a quick, if you have a sump pump, please call DPW, and that we, that was a, you know, it did catch people's attention. We need to do that a little more, and we'll continue to do it. And so we're hop, hoping people sign up, you know, really, this, the timeframe is this fall, that's what we want to do, this fall, by the end of this, this, this calendar year. And then beyond that, we'll be looking at the, you know, the other measures to try to find inflow. But we know there's, there's connections based on this data, and through the infiltration, and our pipes are fairly new, so it's not in the pipes. And we've already actually done a little bit with the manhole covers that were recommended, the manhole covers are easy to replace, there's more work to do with the manholes themselves. With high groundwater, I'm suspecting that, that's why you probably see sump pumps that are continuously running. A sump pump pumps three to five gallons a minute, so that's, that could be seven thousand gallons a day from one sump pump. Significant.
Right. Okay.
And when you think of the cost implications, clearly the sump pumps is much more cost-effective than what John was describing earlier, John Potts from Western Sampson, about what it would cost to replace manholes or other things. And that's why the sump pump is so critical to addressing the sewer flow issue, in terms of a cost as well as capacity issue.
Right, yeah, well, we, we know we have capacity, it's just a matter of clearing it out for us.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is up is the warrant for, for all annual town meetings. Okay, next is up is the warrant for fall annual town meeting.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I have before you a twenty-seven article warrant for the fall annual town meeting. As I noted in some comments earlier this evening, five weeks from tonight is the start on October sixteenth of the fall annual town meeting. Again, this warrant is, is similar to what I provided you with the previous drafts. It's been reviewed by council. It's been reviewed by bond council. So again, upon your approval this evening, Finance Committee is scheduled to begin their hearings this coming Thursday, three weeks from tonight, and then go till Thursday, probably the final, next two Thursdays, to wrap up their work at the end of this month, so they can get their report out the first week of October. And then, as I said, two weeks from tonight, we'll be in with presentations on these warrant articles to you, and then you'd, you'd make your votes that first week of October. And then, you know, then we're at town meeting again October sixteenth, so. So the action this evening is for you to approve the warrant as presented.
Yeah, just a couple typos. I don't know if they're significant. On, on the easement, that's the attach at the end.
Yep.
It refers to Old Farm Road instead of Old Farm Way. I mean, it's, I don't know if that's significant.
I don't think it's significant. You know, it, it is Old Farm Way. I mean, it's, you know, but it does reference Old Farm Road.
And then on, on the first thence, it says, up to a point of land now. I think that should be an or formerly pave Gupta, not.
Okay, on the, on the legal description, okay.
Yeah. Again, I don't, you know, I guess something legal like that, it should be, should be accurate, right?
Okay, I see it, yep.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions or concerns about the warrant?
I just, what do you do about that? That's not a town document.
Oh, no, we can, no, we can change this. We can change this description. If you have a Word document, yep.
Yeah, because it hasn't been.
Just a written description that describes the plan that's, that's associated with it, but we can change that.
Well, it has a surveying company's name at the top, that's why.
Yeah, doesn't it get filed at the registry of deeds?
It will, it will be. It hasn't been.
So they have to update it. We can't just change it.
Right, but we'll, we'll reach out to them and ask them to update the description.
All right.
I will make a motion to sign the warrant for the 2023 fall annual town meeting beginning on October sixteenth, 2023.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We're down to our goals.
I believe the document has been updated with the edits that were from the last meeting, you know, that were discussed. I don't know, given the time, if you want to work on this tonight or schedule another.
Well, usually, I mean, in the past, the chair or somebody else has gone through and taken a pass at all the measurements.
Right, yeah.
So we can just, I, I think, if you need help, I can help you, but I think there's some urgency in getting this done at the next meeting, because we've, we're, the first quarter's almost over.
Right.
And we don't have the goals document in place.
Right, I agree.
Pat, you wanted to add something in here about policy for memorials?
Correct.
That would probably be go under the tier two. That's where lighting policy is.
Yep.
And.
Yeah, maybe, yeah, and then we have, I mean, it could, or we should have one, I guess, just call it policies and then have the lighting policy, and then this policy that we talked about today.
Yep. And then I, so in tier two, we also have the clean energy and sustainability to, to provide support for them. And I was looking at something else, but I'm wondering if we want to put something, even if it's not a formal goal, but at some point this year, get a presentation from the Personnel Board, because they're an appointed, they're mostly appointed by the Select Board, and we haven't heard from them. And I went back, like, they've met, they meet every other year. There's some years where they approve the, there were a couple of years in the minutes where I saw that they approved the proposal for the grade and the step increases, and other years where they didn't, because they didn't. So I, I'm just not clear on the priorities or any support they might need from the board, because we've never heard from them.
I can't tell you.
Should they, should they meet? Should they meet at least once a year?
Yeah, no, I expect they're going to be meeting within the next month or so, within the next few weeks, for the update of, for their, as you said, it's almost a biannual update.
But, but why is it only every other year? It seems like.
They can meet as needed, but the, I think what it, what it is, is they review the book, the policy, cover to cover. And generally, the policies don't, aren't that dynamic that they change annually. And so the experience has been is that they do it, but they, they're welcome to meet sooner. What, what's, what's going to happen is they are going to meet, and talking to Jean Parziale, HR Director, probably in the next month or so, and then probably for a couple of meetings, because they have to review the policies. And they're also going to be updating the Personnel Plan and schedules and rates.
The holidays haven't been updated or anything.
That's what I'm saying, so that's going, that's, that's going to happen, as I said, within the next several weeks.
Yeah, I mean, I thought that.
I know, I know it's a quieter board, but I just, it just seems like.
But it is important.
But I think they're going to come in and see you, so you're welcome to have it. They're going to come and see you.
I would just love to hear from them and see.
I think you'll be hearing from them definitely with, within the next few months.
Okay, well, why don't we wait and see what they say, and then if we need to support them some other way, we can, we can do that.
Well, so, so we could at least this year target getting a briefing from them.
Sure, of course. Yeah, it's definitely going to be at least that.
Right.
Yeah, so I, I guess we can, you know, if you want, I can take a run at this for our next meeting and see who should be, who gets what.
And the measurements.
Because I think this could be, as you, you know, it could be pretty lengthy if we try to go through all this right now.
Yeah, and I think a lot of the tier three stuff is just tracking.
Right.
We did before.
Yeah.
If you need help, let me know, Pat.
Okay. All right, so we will move on to the strategic plan scope.
Yeah, yeah, again, this is dynamic, because we will be going to town meeting in five weeks, seeking funding for this, and beginning this Thursday evening, discussion with the, with the Finance Committee regarding a funding request. So again, I continue to refine it. What you see is sort of a, a one-page sort of bullet points of strategic plan components. I have also obtained the RFP that was issued, that is current right now and out on the street from the town of Westford, that we believe they obtained from another community, because the town of Westford is, is moving forward with a ninety-five thousand dollar ARPA strategic plan. So again, when you look at sort of the main components of it, one is clearly going to be communication. When we looked at what other communities did and what the proposals were for us, there'd be a project webpage. There'd be monthly project status meetings with the Steering Committee, so that's sort of a core function. But then to actually develop the plan, you'll have a community input and visioning component, where you review your associated materials, i.e. the demographics of the town, the master plan of the town, the open space plan, you know, our budgetary status, all, basically all the existing components, the school improvement plan, all those things that go into what the town does. And then there'd be a series of discussions, you know, community focus groups, forums, perhaps a survey, basically getting the community's input and developing a vision and planning with the community, and perhaps a retreat session. You know, again, these are all components of it, or even interviews with stakeholders. Out of that comes sort of a multi-step planning document process, where once you identify a clear set of goals, action steps, and policy statements through the strategic planning sessions, that sort of gets aired, you get feedback from that, you develop performance metrics, and then ultimately comes up with a final plan, a final strategic plan, which is basically a workable planning document. And then once that is all achieved, then the final post-stage would be the implementation. The idea, the idea that there'd be an implementation committee appointed, again, with ongoing strategic initiatives with time periods, very similar to what you see in the master plan document, identifying who the responsible parties are, what are high priorities, and so forth. So that's sort of a, you know, the discussion level overview for what we've seen, and some sort of the desirable expression of interest that we received, as well as what we've seen in the proposals and documents from other communities, and we've shared with those, with you, from Wellesley to others. And so basically, these are the kind of discussions that would then take place. That Finance Committee, you know, obviously, you'll make your recommendation, and then ultimately to town meeting for, for consideration. So that's sort of where, where we're at with this thing, because, you know, it's, you know, it's, it's a considerable ask, and we want to be able to explain to people, what is it, because the town hasn't done one before.
Right. So for the Finance Committee, are you going to do the presentation? Are you going to join them, or are you planning?
I'll be there.
Yeah, Virginia's always, is on the call on Thursday, so I'm going to, yeah, try to lean on Virginia.
There you go.
So one of the things that I feel like is kind of missing from this is just the call for action items specifically. I think that that's kind of something that, that I'm really looking for, and that I think a lot of people are going to kind of want to be looking for. I mean, maybe there's, maybe it's just semantics. There's something else in here that kind of indicates that.
Can you give an example?
I just, I, I have, my only concern with this project is having a lot of high-level information and not a lot of kind of implementation details, right? So there's, like, implement, the word implementation is in here, the implementation committee, but what are we implementing? You know, I want to make sure.
The goal development is where the, the rubber meets the road.
Yes, but under the goals, right, I think that should be kind of more specific. Yeah, the performance metrics I like, but the more specific kind of action items, I think is something that people are going to want to hear, that, like, that, that's something that's going to come out of this, is really specific action items, you know? Like, that's something that I'll be looking for in the, in the, in the things that have been presented to us, the examples that have been presented to us, those were the things that really stood out for me. And I think that those are going to stand out for other people who are voting whether to fund this or not, frankly, so.
That's helpful, thank you. I'll try to incorporate that into the slides.
Thank you.
Yeah, sometimes the words can, you know, mean a lot.
Yes.
You know, it's something that people, you know, focus on and.
We could pull a slide that just has one of the good examples, too.
That's what I was thinking, yeah, grab something from the Wellesley.
You can add the words, like, the goals and action items over time.
There was one that looked a lot like the master plan, like the master plan implementation sheet, where it had kind of the lists, and I, I thought that was, that was great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, anything else on that? If not, we will go on to town manager appointments.
I'm just seeking one confirmation of appointment to the Cultural Council of Kathy Kliski of High Street. It would be for a term ending June thirtieth, 2026. And, and we did share this with the Cultural Council. I happened to be meeting last week with two members of the Cultural Council, and they're excited to have new members join. And I think they've got a few more in the works.
I will make a motion to approve the town manager appointment of Kathy Kliski to the Cultural Council for a three-year term expiring June thirtieth, 2026.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Okay, meeting minutes.
You are ready for a motion?
Sure, yeah.
I will make a motion to approve the Select Board regular meeting minutes of August fourteenth, 2023.
Second.
Okay, any comments, corrections? If not, all in favor?
Aye. I'll make a motion to approve the Select Board regular meeting minutes of August twenty-first, 2023.
Second.
Okay, any corrections, edits here? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Reports and referrals. George, anything from you tonight?
No.
Virginia?
Yeah, from the Conservation Commission. There were representatives from the Conservation Commission who met with representatives from the Planning Board and the Board of Health, three water districts, and Evan Bolansky and the Community Development and Conservation Departments, just to talk a little bit more about how to more effectively interact with each other and be aware of projects going on in town that have crossover between those commissions and, and other bodies. So they found that to be very helpful, and they also wanted to just give a shout out to Evan for pulling that together. The Crooked Spring Reservation has part of the Boardwalk Trail near Graniteville Road underwater. So there's a detour on the Graniteville Road sidewalk until that clears. And the maintenance of the Cranberry Bog Dam is continuing with removal of vegetation completed by the DPW. And they're also looking at improved erosion control. And that's all I have, except for Paul did mention the Finance Committee meetings this month, starting on Thursday.
Okay. Erin? Okay, I have a few. Since our last meeting, I attended a couple ribbon cuttings. The first was at the Lowell Five Cent Savings Bank branch on Fletcher Street, which, it's not a new facility, but it's completely renovated inside, so we congratulate them on, on their upgrade. Also, Euphoria Coffee on fourteen Fletcher Street. They specialize in all types of coffee drinks. If you're, if you like coffee, you should stop by and, and try them out. This Friday, the Veterans Memorial Park Committee will hold the ceremony at three-thirty at the Veterans Park, this Friday, September fifteenth, because it is Veteran, it is POW MIA Memorial Day. So if you're available and can make it by the, the park at three-thirty, it's generally just a short ceremony, but, you know, definitely good to attend. I noticed we didn't have a representative from the Historic Society here today, who hosts their farm fair this Saturday, September sixteenth, from twelve to four p.m. I know that's generally a favorite event for a lot of people to attend. Cultural Council, Paul, you mentioned about they're excited about having a full contingent. They're accepting funding applications for this coming fiscal year. The deadline is October seventeenth. Obviously, the focus is on the arts, but also humanities and science programs. You can get the, an application from massculturalcouncil.org. It has a link to the Chelmsford Cultural Council. And like I said, October seventeenth is the deadline for applications. Want to thank all those who came to the nine-eleven memorial ceremony that we had on Saturday. It was, it was, it was tough for a lot of people to get there because of the challenges getting around town. I had two or three detours myself I had to make on my way from, from my house to here. So thanks, it's very great that came to that. And then this morning, the firefighters had their annual nine-eleven memorial ceremonies. So as everybody knows, September eleventh, that was such a critical day for this country. It's now in the history books, and we just can never forget what happened that day and not let it happen again. And, and lastly, just want to thank DPW, the Fire Department, and the Police Department for their efforts over this weekend after the storm. I mean, they were out straight. They were everywhere. Like I said, there were so many trees down and wires down. You go down the street and you have to turn around, go away, and try, go another way and try to find a way. I'm glad a lot of people did just stay home, because that was the wisest thing to do. So that is all that I have. So I will take a motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn to executive session, not to return to open session for the purposes of strategy with respect to litigation regarding the North Chelmsford Water District PFAS claim and strategy with respect to litigation regarding Ledge Road commercial truck traffic.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. George?
Aye.
Virginia?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. That's four zero. Thank you. We will be adjourning to executive session. Thank you, we will be adjourning to executive session.